Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the it is our 20th meeting of fiscal year 2024 for the Milton Planning Board. We are partially, we are hybrid this evening with some of us in person and some of us remote. If I'd like to call the meeting to order and begin by introducing ourselves. Cheryl?
Cheryl Tagaya, Secretary.
Maggie?
Maggie Oldfield, Member.
Sean?
Sean Fahey, Member.
And Jim? Did Jim? Jim is here with us. If you can unmute. And we'll move on, and now we can introduce our staff. Tim?
Tim Zerwinski, Director of Planning and Committee Development.
Josh?
Josh Leckert Lee, Assistant Director.
And Julia?
Julia Getman, Clerk.
Great, thank you all so much for joining us this evening. We can now begin with our administrative items. We have approval of minutes. And just to get ourselves caught up, we have November 9th, November 28th, and December 4th. Have folks been able to look over those minutes?
I have. All set.
I have just on November 28th to edit.
Okay.
So on page three, at the top under Kathleen O'Donnell, where in the second paragraph, the second sentence says, "On their hard work on the zoning noting that they had been placed in a different position, a difficult position." I went back and I re-listened to that, and Kathleen did not mention me or Jim by name. So I don't think that our names should be in there. So either it should be "end at difficult position," period, or it could say, "And the idea that the plan to increase two Granite Ave to 10 stories had been drafted in the dark without full proper discussion by everyone is just wrong." So either "ended at position" or "finish her thought." Whichever you want.
How do the members feel on that?
Well, seeing as my name is there, I gotta go with what Maggie said.
Noted that they've been put into a difficult position.
Period.
Period.
I'm okay with that edit.
So we would strike after the word "position"?
Yep.
Yeah.
That's okay with me?
I'm fine with that. With that friendly amendment.
And then further down in the big paragraph, when middle of the paragraph, said Mr. Fahey agreed that there were significant gaps that required resolution and that a better article could be created for May Town Meeting, period. He believed that reclassification should be pursued. Then it said, "Miss Oldfield expressed gratitude towards the legal analysts." I'm not sure if analyst is the correct word. "Express gratitude," I was thinking it could say, "express gratitude towards the residents in providing legal analysis and expertise on the zoning."
So I think on this one, Maggie, maybe what you should do is a red line or a markup on this particular one, and we can circulate it. I think it's gonna be too hard to do these as a friendly amendment.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay.
All right, so let's hold off on approving the November 28th, and then just circulate those comments, Maggie, if that's okay?
That's fine, yep.
Is that okay, or just send us the sentences that you would like to replace? Okay, so on November 9th and the 4th, everybody was good with those?
Yes.
Yep.
I was not an attendee, so it's not for me to comment.
Okay. So is there a motion to approve the minutes from December 4th and November 9th?
So should we split them because Sean was present on December 4th?
Sure. A motion to approve the minutes from November 9th?
A second.
And we'll do roll call since we're all individually separated. Sean is abstaining from this. Maggie?
Yes.
Cheryl?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
And myself, yes, to the approval of minutes of Thursday, November 9th. And then if I can have a motion to approve the minutes for Monday, December 4th.
It's all moved?
I'm like, a motion to, I'm sorry.
And a second?
Second.
Okay, roll call. Sean?
Yes.
Cheryl?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Maggie?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Great, thank you so much, and we'll come back to the November 28th at a later date. The next item on the agenda is discussion of our next minute dates. And at our last meeting, we had added a meeting to focus strictly on the MBTA. Next week on the 17th, it will actually be a Wednesday rather than our typical meeting on a Thursday, so January 17th. And then we have our public hearing for 111 Highland Street scheduled for the 25th. So those-
Meredith, just a quick-
Yes.
There's a school committee meeting on the 17th, so MATV will be covering that. So that meeting on the 17th will be entirely remote, so.
Correct. Good. Give us a week to all get healthy again. Okay, that's great. Yes, so fully remote, and the plan is to be in person on the 25th. Great. So now-
Meredith, I won't be available for the 25th. I may be able to remote it, but I won't be in town.
Okay, great. Just let us know if you can-
I will, thank you.
Sure. And now, Tim, if you want to give an update?
Sure, just a couple, a couple of quick things. We talked about the 111 Highland Street public hearing. There had been a request at a previous hearing for Chief Madden from the Milton Fire Department to come in and kind of just walk through, you know, his thoughts on the site plan and the traffic and circulation plan. So he's told me that he'll be available on the 25th. I'm gonna, you know, confirm that with him, but we did discuss it. He did ask if the board has questions that they could send in advance so he could prepare and be, and have some good informative testimony ready. That would be great, so, you know, if folks can maybe agree to, if you've got questions for Chief Madden around the site plan or the circulation plan relative to emergency access for 111, if you can get those to me maybe, you know, before Friday of next week, so we can get those to him, you know, a week in advance to be able to, you know, look at those and prepare for those. So if you could send those to me, that would be great. The relative to future meeting dates, and we'll get these dates also confirmed, but I do have them on my notes right here. Because the town clerk will be using the Blue Room for preparations for in-person and mail voting for the referendum and the primary and the general election, we'll be moving to the Cronin Room for the February 22nd meeting, the August 22nd meeting, and the October 24th meeting. February 22nd looks funny to me, but we'll, one way or the other, one of those February meetings is gonna be in the Cronin Room. So we'll make sure that we get those dates to you, and, you know, that'll be obviously on the agenda and on the invites and everything, and we'll make sure that everyone is well aware of that. But the clerk does use the Blue Room to kind of spread out some of their materials for that. And just a couple of upcoming things. One of them, pretty minor, one of them a little less minor, but I wouldn't consider it to be major. You may remember maybe a year and a half, two years ago, maybe at this point, the folks from Pulte came to the Planning Board for a release of the bond for Woodlot Drive. They had, you know, completed all the houses, completed the road, and had requested a release of the security bond that had been placed on Woodlot Drive. The town engineer had identified just a real slight issue around some ponding that was going on where Woodlot Drive met Unquity Road. So we kind of stashed away enough bonds to kind of cover that fix, and then the board voted to release the majority of it. Those improvements have been made. Everything at Unquity Road and Woodlot Drive looks fine. So they're gonna be, they've sent in a request for the release of the remainder of the bond. It might be $12,000 or $15,000 that are left. So that'll be something really quick on the agenda for, probably not next week, but for the 25th. That'll just be something the board needs to approve. And then the final thing is, we had had maybe a couple meetings ago, a question from the Milton Marketplace folks who are in the process of completing a project that had gotten a site plan modification from the Planning Board to enclose the second floor patio upstairs of Milton Marketplace. They had wanted to add an additional staircase to provide a sort of a second means of egress out of that. It's not shown on the site plan, there's no, you know, provision for minor amendment in the site plan approval. So I think the board, you know, and there were a couple of questions that the board had, you know, relative to that addition and what you all needed to see on the site plan. I'm expecting an application for a site plan modification either tomorrow or early next week, in which case we would need to talk about when we want to schedule a public hearing for that. It could conceivably be on the 25th, but I leave it up to you all to decide if that's something you want to get on the agenda or wait until February. So that's that. It may warrant a little bit of discussion here, or, you know, we can just decide to punt it to February.
Tim, did you want to talk about the recent grant award?
No.
Before we dive into that, can I ask a quick question?
Yeah, Jim, go for it.
Just regarding that Pulte bond, do we have anything in writing from the town engineer that he's signed up on the work and that it's all set, or?
I'll have something from the DPW Director. I've got an email, but we can get something a little bit more robust, you know, in advance of that meeting. So we'll definitely get that and have that ready.
Cool, yeah, just before we release that money, that's all. Thank you.
I didn't mean to be curt, Josh, but not quite ready for prime time.
No worries.
But it's a preview of coming attractions.
Good.
With money.
Nice to hear. I did have a question, Tim, and I meant to just ask you on this. When is our next meeting scheduled for East Milton, the overlay zoning? That we were-
We don't have one scheduled. We actually looked back through the minutes and through the recordings. We actually didn't kind of pin down a date. But I think, and let me bring up my email, because I did email with Josh Fiala about this, and I do believe that they are available either of our, so either on the 25th or February 8th, which would be the normal first scheduled meeting in February. MAPC is available, so if, you know, again, the 25th, if you want to leave a wide berth for 111, maybe we leave that empty. But they're also available on the 8th, they've got that penciled in if you want to schedule that.
Okay. I don't know how the board feels. I'm thinking maybe the 8th to give ample time for discussion on that.
Yeah, I think the 8th sounds good.
Meredith, do you have in particular topics for 111 Highland for the 25th? The particular topics that the applicants prepared to discuss at that meeting?
I think we're still on the, you know, cut and fill in architecture. I think they're gonna, they were, you know, they were taking their time to go back and look at something, so I'm not sure. Tim, do you have an update on what they're willing to come back with and how far along they are? Obviously, you know, if we have Chief Madden, that would be nice to sort of address those concerns for the neighbors. But I think they were looking at some possible redesign of moving the trash and generators and so forth to the back.
I have not had that conversation, so we can we can reach out to Ned. I mean, I do think that, you know, there's more discussion to be had on. I do think they want to kind of, you know, pin down the stormwater issue and sort of get on to some of the architecture and the cut and fill questions. I think because Chief Madden will be there, I think that, you know, traffic and circulation, you know, will be another kind of, you know, topic to discuss.
So I guess my suggestion is that we not confirm just yet. Or I'm concerned about holding a full evening of meeting for 111 Highland when we don't know what they're prepared to discuss. So we have a lot, you know, to potentially be on an agenda. So maybe we schedule the Milton Marketplace for the 25th. So at least we can get that started, and then East Milton overlay could be on February 8th.
I think that sounds good. I think we could do Ten Basset and have that addressed on the 25th.
I mean, in my conversations with Ned, he's kind of expressed kind of wanting to have a fair amount of time. So I don't know precisely, you know, I think they'll be ready to discuss whatever the board wants to discuss. But I do think that they want to try to get a lot accomplished on the 25th.
So I would, I would say then that any new materials, any redesign, we would like to see a week in advance rather than at the meeting so that we can have an efficient use of our time.
Yeah, and I believe that we're still waiting, they were going to check with Milton Hospital to see if they could use some of their parking for special events so that they could reduce their surface parking. So I would hope maybe that they would have the answer to that and a redesign of their parking that shows that reduction in parking spots.
Yeah.
I think that's something that they'll be ready to discuss that. That's, I know that that's one issue that they've been working on.
Okay. And engineering, yep, okay.
I still think that we could open the public hearing for Milton Marketplace. I don't see that as being complex.
So if I don't have the application in my hands, if I do get it in my hands either tomorrow or Tuesday, we can get that advertised. But if not, that'll have to be something for February, so.
Understood, okay.
Yeah, if, so if the board is ready to kind of go along with that, we can kind of be nimble on that one.
That sounds good.
But I do agree that East Milton overlay deserves some amount of time. So if we do put it on the 8th, then I think we have to be mindful of not putting 111 Highland on the 8th as well.
I agree. So we want to try to get as much done on the 25th, if possible. But I think we can do Ten Basset. All right. So that sounds like a good sort of a plan. And then, Tim, once you know a little bit more about Ten Basset, we can schedule accordingly. Great, all right.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
In regard to Highland Street, I think it'd be helpful if we all reviewed the article in Town Meeting that made this opportunity possible to develop that site. And if we could trouble Julia, maybe to just, you know, pull that article for us and distribute it to the Planning Board members, just so we have it. I looked at it recently online. It's a fairly lengthy article, partly because the recommendation is basically as many pages as the article request itself, you know. But I just, I think there's a lot in there. And as we continue to review the project, I think, you know, we should be responsible to what was passed in Town Meeting.
So, Tim-
I think that's a great suggestion.
I'm sorry, Meredith. I was just gonna ask, Tim, if that article now, a section of the zoning code, is actually in the code that we have from General Code?
I will include that link in an email. Yeah, that made it in there, so.
It seems like that's the place that we should refer to rather than the Town Meeting article.
The article as well.
Yeah, and it's also helpful to actually re-watch Town Meeting, because then you can hear the discussion by Town Meeting members.
Yeah, you know, my, you know, my general thought is we've heard from an awful lot of the neighbors, and there's, you know, we've heard both proponents and those that are also not in favor of it. And at some point, Town Meeting made this possible, and it's an article that was passed. So it's for that reason that I feel like we should at least, you know, understand what was approved in that article, because it was the basis for this submission for the project.
Yeah, and the reason I mentioned the zoning, Sean, is because that followed that article, and the application is submitted pursuant to the zoning. So our job is to make sure that it complies with the zoning, and the codification was adopted.
So does that, does the zoning supersede anything in the article?
The zoning, the zoning is the article, so that's-
Okay.
What got approved at Town Meeting is now in there, so.
So it's the same thing? See, is the language exactly the same, Tim? There's no, there's no risk of it being, okay, perfect. Thank you. Appreciate the clarification.
Great, good questions. Okay. So with that, I think we can now move to Citizens Speak. If there's anyone in the audience, we can invite them to speak or online if we see any hands up.
We've got some hands up in the in-person audience and as well as online. Do you want in-person first?
Let's do, yeah, let's alternate, starting with in-person, please.
Thank you, Robert.
Good evening, can you hear me? Yes. Good evening, my name is Robert Rozowski, and I live at 29 Raldle Road off of Elliot Street. I am so happy that Town Meeting voted overwhelmingly, by two-thirds in fact, when only a majority was needed to pass the zoning in compliance with the state's MBTA Communities Law. I welcome the eventual construction of multifamily housing both in my neighborhood and elsewhere in Milton in order to help solve the incredible housing crisis we have in our nation, the state, the region, and in Milton. Unfortunately, four members of this Planning Board, not including Cheryl Tagaya, have failed the town. They never created a zoning article for Town Meeting. They requested that the state change the designation of the town as a rapid transit community, but then they were rebuffed. They kept yammering about whether the town even needed to comply with the law. And after Town Council weighed in and said, "Yes, we do need to comply," they went on to consider obtaining their own council because they didn't like Town Council's opinion. Really? On whose dime would this have been paid? Those would have been unnecessary costs for Milton taxpayers to pay for yet another attorney. And the yammering continued about whether we needed to comply with the law-
Let's keep the tone respectful, Mr. Rozowski.
Excuse me?
Mr. Rozowski.
Excuse me.
I would like for you to have a respectful dialogue and speak respectfully to this Planning Board. Thank you.
That's fine, I'm talking about what happened. At Town Meeting, these same four members voted to turn the article back, and/or they voted against the article itself. This is documented. It's my opinion that they ducked their legal responsibilities to the town. Now with the election on February 13th, we need all voters to vote yes. We can adjust the zoning article at a future Town Meeting, but doing so requires a yes vote in order to stay in compliance with the law and provide a firm foundation for any modifications. Yet I've looked at the agendas for the Planning Board for last January 4th, tonight, and then January 17th. I see continual discussion about creating MBTA Communities Act zoning. Town Council on a January 9th opinion stated that if the yes vote does not prevail on February 13th, then no substantially similar zoning can be brought before Town Meeting for yet another two years. So how can you expect to write any different zoning that will be in compliance with the same requirements in a short period of time before the upcoming deadline for Town Meeting articles? I wonder what kinds of actions you can take prior to the final vote of the electorate on February 13th. No one knows the outcome, so I have to wonder on what you're going to be spending your time. Only a yes vote on February 13th can keep the town in compliance with the law. Only a yes vote can provide a basis for any further work on the zoning. Only a yes vote will enable the benefits to Milton of the zoning, including increased local control on what gets built and more housing options in the middle of the housing crisis. Only a yes vote ensures that we are not subject to legal actions that will cost Milton taxpayers to fight the actions. Only a yes vote prevents the state from blocking funding for the town because we would otherwise be out of compliance with the law. If the Planning Board wants to keep working on the MBTA Communities Act zoning, then all the power to you. To do so, the board needs to be spending the next few meetings ensuring a yes vote on February 13th. Only with a yes vote can we continue the progress we've made with the zoning to improve Milton. Thank you for your time.
Hey?
We have Christine Hadlin online.
Okay.
Hi, it's Christine, can you hear me?
Yes, Christine, welcome.
All right, thank you. Christine Hadlin, I live at 112 Maple Street. And I just want to comment mostly on the last meeting and what's kind of occurred in the past week. So some of the comments that I've heard from members of this board is that the MBTA zoning process was too rushed and that you didn't have enough time to do the zoning properly. The process didn't reach enough members of the public or that there were many residents that weren't aware of what was going on. And that was after a process that lasted almost two years for you and the rest of the town to become familiar with the law, review multiple models in your meetings, meet with consultants, and have eight public forums to try to educate the public. Last week at the meeting, and when I say you, I don't mean you specifically, it's just the Planning Board, it was stated that you don't have the qualifications as a board to write zoning, but that you are advocating to reject the current zoning in the Article 1 and probably initially start over. And that this would involve conducting, and again, I don't know if I have the exact words, but a financial analysis, you want to revisit the subdivisions, you want to learn the software to test out more models, revisit the design standards, do a traffic study, hire consultants, and hire a zoning attorney, and then finalize an article to be reviewed with the public, the Warrant Committee, Town Council, and the Select Board, all before May Town Meeting. At Tuesday, the Select Board heard back from Town Council, as Robert referred to, that if Article 1 is rejected, only a substantially different article may be presented in May, or else we will have to wait two years to bring forth a similar article. This seems to add yet another task to the Planning Board's plan, which is that you will need to meet with Town Council to identify what is a substantially different zoning article and how do you craft one if you plan to do that for May or October or whenever it is. And again, this puts us at least two years out of compliance, loss of state funding, and very probably defending lawsuits. I would like to respectfully ask you all to reconsider this logic. Identify exactly what are the specific areas that you would like to see changed in this article and work with our town employees and departments and elected officials and the residents to make it better after we pass it in February. Then we will have plenty of time to do the work. And I commit myself to helping and to coming to meetings and to helping and work with you on that. I hopefully, one of the goals of this new zoning article that you want to come up with is compliance with the law. This seems like a much better use of your time, our town planning department's time, and the residents' time. So again, I please ask you to consider this in your debates. Thank you.
Thank you, Christine. Next, anyone from the audience, Josh?
No, they're all looking awkwardly back at me. And no hands up on.
Okay, okay. Great, thank you. So at this time, I would like to now open the public hearing for reopen, 79 Pleasant Street, Site Plan Modification. And we'll welcome Marion, if you want to come.
Good evening.
Good evening, Marion.
Whoever's speaking on this, sorry.
And just by way of introduction, you know, folks may have seen the notice for this in the Milton Times and the Butters may have gotten to a Butters notices. Because we had to postpone the last scheduled planning board hearing on this, it technically broke the chain of continuance for this public hearing. So even though this is technically the first session of a new public hearing, this is the same project that we've been discussing for, you know, the past several months. The application is, represents the latest and most up-to-date materials that had been presented at the last hearing. It's just, you know, we sort of broke the chain continuance and had to kind of re-notice the hearing. But this is the same project we've been talking about for multiple sessions. So Marion, go for it.
Excuse me just a minute.
That would be great. That would be great.
May I go ahead? Yeah. So I'm Marion McHattrick. I'm representing the applicant, Falcone Properties. And we do have Robert Falcone here tonight. He's in the audience, but he'll come up as necessary. And we should have Paul Gunn on Zoom. We see him, he is the engineer. And Paul is prepared to share screens, I believe, so he can put up the plan. So whatever's easier, if you prefer to do it, that's fine. Okay. So, just to, it's been quite a while since we've actually met and discussed this project. So just a very quick recap. Bent's, the Bent's building is an historic building, 79 Pleasant Street. And in 2019, the owner, Falcone Properties, came to the planning board with a site plan and the Board of Appeals with an application for various special permits, modifications, and variances for their plan, which was to do a mixed-use building in place of the entirely manufacturing and cafe use which had existed for many, many years, since 1900. And while the building is historic, it was also in very poor condition. It took a really substantial investment by Falcone Properties. It was a big commitment. They were very interested in seeing the building preserved, looking the same from the front, but finding no uses for it. So that 2019 proposal with lots of details in the decisions was approved by the planning board and by the Board of Appeals. Subsequent to that time, Falcone Properties were able to purchase the residential lot adjacent at 672 Randolph Avenue. And that's also an historic, that property has an historic residential house. I think it dates back to about 1850. And the Falcone family was very interested in seeing that house continue to look as attractive as it does now and didn't want to change the residential use. But they did see the possibility of creating some additional parking in the rear of that lot, which is about 23,000 or 24,000 square feet. It is a residential lot, as is the Bent's lot. Bent's lot was a pre-existing non-conforming commercial use. So that application was a modification of that pre-existing use. To change the adjacent lot to a mixed use with commercial parking and a residence, a zoning variance is required. So next week, on the 16th, we will be having, I think it's the second continuation of a hearing with the Board of Appeals. Basically, the first hearing, we just presented the application. The Board of Appeals is always going to be very interested in the planning board's perspective and whether they feel that, whether you feel that the plan is laid out in the proper way, whether or not it protects adjacent properties and that sort of thing. So although we will be going to a hearing, a second hearing next week with the Board of Appeals, we have this hearing tonight. I'm going to explain changes that have been made in the plan after meeting with neighbors on-site. And I'm expecting that we're not going to be done. But we'll have more of an opportunity to continue to discuss this. Excuse me. So we did meet on-site with almost all the members of the planning board on September, December, Saturday, December 2nd. Robert Falcone was there, Greg Morse was there from Morse Engineering. I was there. Most of the members of the planning board were there. And neighbors Mai and Emma Trung of 678 Randolph Avenue and Ryan Villard, Caitlin Manning and Nick Sesso of 688 Randolph Avenue were there. And we walked the site. We looked at a revised layout that the Falcone company had been working on. And we discussed what was good about it, what wasn't good about it, what changes should be made. And after the site walk, the applicant's engineers revised the plan further. So we did submit a plan dated December 8th that had those revisions in it. That's available on the town website. And you'll be looking at it tonight. The changes in that plan are, basically, the layout of the parking lot has been reduced in size, the number of spaces has been reduced to 15. And the parking lot, as was suggested by a member of the planning board in a previous hearing, the parking lot has been turned so that it's now, it now runs along the existing parking lot in back of Bent's as long, as far as it can. And what that does is, in addition, by making the lot smaller and by turning it, a little bit more of a setback is now created between the closest neighbors, the neighbors who are on Randolph Avenue. This plan that you have before you tonight has, shows all the underground drainage structures and a stormwater management plan. And all the calculations for that plan have been provided to the town engineer. I did check today, I have not received yet feedback from the town engineer. So that's another thing that the planning board is going to be looking for, and we don't have it tonight. So we're not going to be finished looking at this application tonight. But that has been with the engineering department for, you know, over a month. I know they're very busy, but I'm hoping to get some response soon. The sides of the additional parking area facing the lot lines for 678 and 688 Randolph Avenue are now going to be surrounded by the same kind of fence that you see in the current parking lot. That's a wood fence. And at the meeting, we discussed making that fence six feet high with two feet of wood lattice on top. So that fence will be in the edge of the parking lot. The lighting in the parking area would be the same lighting as in the existing parking area. These are all changes from the original proposal, where there were light poles and so forth. And it's a much less conspicuous type of lighting, but it's adequate to provide safety within the lot. The trees to be planted outside the new parking area are shown in the plan. And these are going to be a mix of red maple trees and arborvitae. That's what we talked about at the meeting. We talked about the height of the arborvitae to be planted, to be 10 to 12 feet. This is so that they will be higher than the fence when they're planted. And then they will get much higher than that. Arborvitae grow to be very tall. And so the arrangement of parking spaces now, it's a net increase, this is a net increase of 10 parking spaces. So it's not an excessive amount of parking for these uses. What happened with the previous application was we had a very limited area for parking. We had a pre-existing non-conforming commercial use. We didn't have, there's no standard to apply because a variance was required for that, to allow that configuration. But we looked at the business district zoning for a pre-existing non-conforming commercial use and applied it to the site. And the Board of Appeals accepted that analysis, saying that because what we were going to do with the mixed use required less parking than what current zoning would require of a totally commercial use in this building, that you could be approved with this minimal amount of parking to the rear and then the parking on the street. But it was never an ideal plan for parking. Even this plan maybe isn't ideal. But what this plan does is it creates 10 more parking spaces. That means that during the day and at night, when tenants come back to park in their five, there are five lots with the five tenant units, they will, those lots, those spaces should be available for them. What's happening now is that they come back towards the end of the afternoon or whenever, and the lots are being used by commercial visitors to the businesses and to the cafe. And it's inevitable, it's, the parking just is too little. And the second thing the new parking plan does is it removes the tandem parking in the rear that was for employees, which is one parking space in back of another parking space. It's a way to create more parking on a limited site, but it's not a good system because nobody wants to use it because they can't get out in the far space. Those have been eliminated. So spaces have been eliminated that exist in the existing parking. And 15 new spaces are being created, would be created if we were allowed to do this supplementary parking area. And that, but the net increase is only 10. The division of spaces is basically, there are five spaces for the apartments. There are two short-term delivery types of spaces next to the Bent's building. I don't count those as regular parking spaces in these totals, but they're very important because they move those delivery parkers, you know, the smaller trucks, off the street and put them right next to the building so they're not blocking the street as much. That's quite important. We've discussed that with the police department, and they really want those spaces. Then we have the remaining regular parking spaces, eight existing spaces, and 15 new ones. Adding all of the spaces in the old lot and the new lot together, you have a net gain of 10 spaces. So these combined parking areas accommodate all the mixed uses in the Bent's building. They give more flexibility for the cafe, which basically ends up being just street parking. And now people could come and park in the back. Not, a lot of people come and pick up their food at the cafe. I use it a lot myself, I never do that. I always park and sit down because that's what I like to do, even though there's not a lot of seating. There are people who do that every day. I think it's beneficial to have the right amount of parking for this mixed-use building. But I want to emphasize that this is not an application to change the uses. And it is not an application to increase or intensify the uses in the Bent's building. And that is not the purpose of this application. Now that the property owner also owns the adjacent property, and it's a large lot, 23,000 square feet, which potentially could be divided into two residential lots or could be added to property to the rear or whatever, who knows? Instead, what Falcone Properties is proposing is to use approximately, you know, less than 20% of the lot in the rear for this additional parking and to leave the rest of the property as it is. So from the street, it will continue to look as it does. There will continue to be residential tenants in the house and there are tenants there who are, seem to be quite happy with property. They will continue to have their own driveway coming off Randolph Avenue. There will be no traffic going from the parking lot out around the existing house or next to the adjacent houses on Randolph Ave. So, you know, at this point, having gone through maybe three or four redesigns of the parking lot, we think we've reached the point where it's as good as it can be. And we're very interested in hearing more feedback from the planning board, questions, and of course, from the public. So with that, I'll conclude my remarks. I think that.
Marion?
Yeah.
Meredith, may I?
Yes, I was going to say, questions from the board, yes.
Yeah, okay, thank you. Marion, I was on the board when this came to the planning board as an original site plan approval, I guess. And the ownership of this, of the Bent's building and property had changed a couple of times, and the building needed some work. And the Falcone, as the applicant, then had committed to restoring a significant historic property in town, knowing that, you know, if, it would need some kinds of relief, right? Because it wouldn't meet the zoning for today, right? But at that time, you went through the history of the property a little bit. And I'm wondering if that would be beneficial to? My recollection is that this property, these two lots were part of the same ownership at one time. And this dwelling was subdivided and sold. So you're basically bringing it back more to what its historic sort of configuration of property is? So can you do that, can you go through that history a little bit, please?
Yeah, and that's a, that's a good point. I should probably have discussed that. I spent a lot of time studying this property. Before Falcones decided to do anything, when they were just looking at it, they asked me to do research on it. And I went back and I researched all of the adjacent properties and the title to this property going back to about 1895, 1900, and before that. Because there was a right-of-way along the side of the property and we needed to determine who had the right to use it and so forth. That has since been resolved by a land court case, and Falcones now have control of that. But the property of 672 Randolph Ave and also property to the rear that's now all owned by one owner including the horse, what we call a horse farm property, a great deal of that property was all part of the original Bent's site. And until the early 1980s, it was still part of the Bent's site. But what happened was that it was difficult, I mean, I can't, I speak definitely for the owner, but it was financially difficult to keep this building going. It was very old, it needed a lot of repairs. It was hard to find uses that would generate enough income. We, at one point, the Board of Appeals allowed an apartment to be built in the back, and the owner lived in an apartment in the back of the building. All of the properties stayed together until the early 1980s. And then it was sold off in a couple of different transactions. The one that you're talking about is that a new plan was drawn up for 672 Randolph Avenue. And that lot was sold to a private owner. So from that time, around maybe 1984, until a couple of years ago, the property was in private ownership and they weren't all owned together. But before then, through the years, for decades, those properties were used together. Employees and owners lived in the little historic house that's on 672. And, excuse me, in back of that house and the wooded area, the wood for the wood-fired ovens that created the biscuits and the bread and the cookies at Bent's, that wood was all gathered from that back lot. And it actually is, they're called faggots, that's the name. They're little sticks, and that's the type of wood that had to be used in those ovens. They also park commercial trucks and vehicles from time to time to the rear. I don't have, you know, it's so long ago, I don't have pictures for you. But I do think it's interesting that the property was owned together for a long time and was only finally divided for financial reasons. So it was, would have been ideal if it had all stayed together, maybe. But then again, maybe it wouldn't have been because what's happened here is because of the limited lot and everything else, you found a developer who was interested in the history and wanted to keep the historic building and was willing to put in the investment to restore the building but keep it looking the same, even with that small lot. And now is willing to make the investment to purchase the adjacent lot and to see if he can provide a little bit better parking arrangement for everybody. So who's to say whether it was good or bad that the property was subdivided back in 1984? But in any case, there was a long history of these two properties being owned together.
And then another question that had come up at that time was, these are, really might be considered micro-units in terms of the residential units and the size of them. And there was some question about the market for that. And I think at one point, but since this is a new public hearing, I'm going to ask the question again. Those are in demand, as I understand it? Those apartments are in demand?
It's my understanding that there have been tenants in them most of the time. They are in demand, they're used for different purposes. There are some people who live in Milton, who live in those apartments, work in Milton. There were. There were, from time to time, there were people who were leasing the apartments because they wanted a place near Boston where they could be during the week, and then they'd live further away, and they would go to the Cape or wherever they lived on the weekend. Bob Falcone's here. Do you want to add anything?
And just the...
He's the one who really knows about those.
And the parking is one space per unit?
Yes, there's one space per unit.
Right.
And they're marked spaces, but people still violate that signage. So with more spaces, it seems, it appears to me at least, that it's going to be easier to enforce that and to keep those spaces for the tenants, one per unit. And they're not allowed to have more than one, I mean, well, they can't park more than one car, each person leasing an apartment. So what's the market been for those small units?
It's, this five units there, I think three of the five units are still the original tenants. One of the, one of the people that vacated actually live in the house at 672, their family, they, a couple, and their daughter moved in with them, and their, two children, I think, or her two children. So it's in demand, and it's, they rent virtually unadvertised. There's a vacancy right now, and the lady there went into a nursing home.
Okay.
Unfortunately, not in Milton because there's nothing for her.
So the one space per unit has been working...
Yeah, that works fine, but it's...
For those residential units?
So what happens is a lot of the commercial tenants park in their designated spots, their assigned spots. That creates an issue. So the new expanded lot, if it gets approved, we're going to move the residential parking spots into that lot. That opens up more convenient spots for the retail tenants and the commercial offices upstairs. And the offices upstairs are all Milton people. It's a Milton developer, it's a Milton interior designer, and they have no intentions of leaving.
Okay, thank you, Meredith. Those are my questions for now.
Yep. Great. Bob, I just had a question, just following that, on the parking. How do you handle, for guests of the tenants, is there an area that's marked guest parking, or do they use the commercial spaces in the evening? They have somebody to stay over?
Yes, if they have someone, there's, the commercial spaces are usually emptied by 5:00, so that, there's plenty of spots. Like I was there last night, we were there last night doing a little work, and the parking lot was, there were four cars in the lot at 7:30. That was it, so there's plenty of room for that. It's just, it's during the day, they're coming and going to pick up the food. I mean, yeah. Caterer, the caterers' orders get picked up.
Yeah. Yeah, there's some, there's some great businesses in there, for sure. Very popular, so...
Yeah, thank you, thank you. And, yeah, but like Marian said, there's no increase of a business there. The buildings aren't being expanded, the businesses are staying, they just, we just need a few more parking spots to work better. And it's going to be the same driveway. We're not using the driveway on the house. They couldn't anyways because it's being fenced in, and it'll be trees that will grow. It's a different brand of the arborvitae, it's a hardy arborvitae, so, and they're going to be pretty big. If we plant eight to 10 12-foot trees, they'll be, they'll double in three or four years.
Other questions from the board?
Yeah, Meredith, if you don't mind.
Yep.
I just want to say that I appreciate that the property is returning to its original configuration. That's, that's really nice to see. I do, I'm not sure if I missed it or not, because I didn't get a big, hard copy of the plan, but I'm wondering if you provided a plant list with the quantities, and then, as well as the spacing of the green giants and the red maples? So the quantities, and then just a little bit more defined landscape plan?
Yes, it's on the plan, right?
It is on the plan. Deciduous at Evergreen Tree Planting Detail, I think it's page four. That's the plan that shows the layout of the parking lot, shows, it shows, you know, where trees are supposed to be located.
On the outside of the fence.
Right. I mean, if Paul Gunn has anything to add to that, as he's the one who's actually worked on the details of this plan, if you look at these plans online, you certainly should enlarge them, and you should be able to see more of the detail. But I'm looking at the plan here, and there's a line, there's a depiction of the trees, there's a line from each tree showing what the species is of tree that's being planted there. And that should show you the spacing as well. And particularly since you have the background, Maggie, maybe after you've reviewed that, if you have any more comments or suggestions on the spacing, we'd be certainly more than happy to get those.
Yeah, I just didn't see a count. Was there a count? Like how many?
I think it's just graphic, Maggie, so...
But there is a count.
Yeah, there is. We talked about it today.
I can have it in my...
The walkthrough was discussed.
Yeah.
Maggie, if I could jump in, Maggie, it's 18. And it looks like the spacing, although denoted, just using the dimensions on the plan, it looks like the spacing is like five and a half feet on center. And the tree size is noted as 10 to 12-foot green giants, green giant arborvitae.
That's correct.
Yeah, I saw that. I just wasn't sure if the actual green circles was the actual count.
Got it.
So...
Well, just, you know, what I was looking at is the dimension of the spaces is 68 feet, you know, those parking spaces that the green giants are running parallel with. And so they're eight and a half foot spacing, eight and a half foot spaces, so that's 68 feet, and there were 12 green giant trees running parallel with those spaces. So that's how I arrived at the spacing.
So it might just be helpful, Mrs. McGetrick, if you just wrote that, because when the building inspector comes to sign off, he's going to want a count and measure. That was just my experience with them.
So you, yeah, so I will, I'll follow up with a brief memo to the planning board with the count, the species, and the spacing of the trees, and that way I can check in with the engineer to make sure I'm giving you the... But that sounded very accurate.
Yeah, we sent pictures too. Photos, there were photos.
But you're right. So that specific information, should the planning board do a site plan approval, should be in there because the building inspector needs it in order to know that everything is being planted as it's supposed to be. So thank you. I'll provide that.
Thank you.
A question for Tim, Meredith. Meredith, I'm sorry, you're muted. I know it's hard to chair that one.
Sorry, Jim had his hand up, so can we let him ask his question, and then we'll come back to you? And we do have somebody from the audience, Orion Villard, who we'll invite to speak in just a minute. Go ahead, Jim.
Thank you. I just wanted to say that as a former owner of this property, I am ecstatic. I mean, what Mr. Falcone has done with it is just, is great. It's really the best use for this property. I attended the walkthrough, and I thought it was, it was really open, it was great, the abutters showed up, and I think everybody was able to speak frankly and politely, and I think that from what I can tell on the plan, using my little magnifying glass here, Mr. Falcone did everything that he said he was going to do with the six-foot stockade fence, and the two-foot lattice, and the trees, and pushing the fence closer to the parking lot. I'm very, very happy with this. I mean, pending no negative feedback from the abutters, and pending a positive review from the town engineer, I don't see any problems with it. I guess as a former plow driver, the one thing I would suggest is getting rid of the precast concrete curb at the snow removal area, because that's just going to get smashed by plows, but that's just an opinion. And I'd be ready to vote whenever it pleases the board. That's all. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Jim. Cheryl?
Yeah, I just wanted to ask Tim about, I think he said because of a schedule snafu, this had to be read advertised, but are all the materials that were originally submitted still part of the record for this hearing? Tim?
I had asked Marian to submit the most updated site plan and a memo, kind of explaining any kind of recent changes to it, but we can ask her to kind of submit the previous iterations in all those documents, just so that it's kind of formally part of the application.
It doesn't have to be all of the older documents that are superseded, but the things like the fence, photos, the lighting, you know, the, I think you had a photometric plan. You're going to have a different photometric now because you're using a different light fixture. I just think we want to make sure that this hearing, this public hearing, if it is in fact a new public hearing, has all the correct documentation.
Yeah, usually the way I do that, I wasn't sure how we wanted to handle it in this case, because we came up at the last minute, but I would, and again, I would give the planning board a memo, asking that the planning board incorporate by reference all of the previous documents that have been filed, and I'll name the date of the application, the original application, this application, whether it was September or October, I don't recall. And they're all, you haven't taken them down, they're all online, but formally, in order to incorporate all of the documents in this one, in this application, you should have that statement from us, and we will do that. Now, you can do it yourselves, but I'm going to write you a memo anyway, so I will put that in the memo.
I'd like to make sure it's all current, though, because the plan is a different configuration, so the photometric plan would be different, and the light fixtures are no longer pull-mount, they're on the fence, so the photometric plan would be different. The photographs of the fence would be the same, the photographs of the plant materials might be the same. Just, please make sure, I'd rather not refer back to a document that has things that are out of the date. I'd rather have up-to-date documents.
I will make sure that we have up-to, I think we have an up-to-date photometric plan here, but I...
Yeah, we changed that.
To reflect this plan?
And I filed it, but, but when did I file it? I filed it before December 14. All of these materials were filed for the previous application.
Understood.
So when I, so I, in the memo, I will say that these are the up-to-date, I will identify by date the up-to-date plans. So, and I understand exactly what you're, because it's very confusing otherwise. So the most up-to-date site plan, up-to-date photometric, and then any...
Planting.
Planting pictures.
And, you know, it's important...
I'll have to go through everything to make sure because of that, this glitch that's happened.
It's not only important for now, but, you know, we have, we do have things come up that were approved by different boards, and they have to be able to stand alone for someone who wasn't involved in the hearing or in the approval, you know, later, you know, if there's an amendment that comes up later. So, you know, as comprehensive and complete and accurate as possible. And then, Tim, I request that when we have the next, the continuation of this, is that all the documents be put in our binder, in our online binder folder, or whatever we want to call it, just so that we can have it all in one place to refer to? Thank you.
Will do.
Sorry, Meredith, you're muted again.
We have Orion Villard, who would like to, has his hand up. We can invite Ryan to speak. You can unmute yourself, Ryan.
Oh, sorry, I accidentally muted it. I just want to first say thank you to everyone that came to the site walk. It was very informative. Learned a lot.
Ryan, can you just state your address for the record, please?
Oh, sorry, 688 Randolph Ave.
Great, thank you.
Yeah, just thank you, everyone, for coming. It was very, you know, informative, kind of learned a lot more about it. I guess in the end, other than saying, you know, we still don't really want the parking lot, I guess the one thing I could ask for is selfishly, for leaf cleanup purposes, maple drop a lot of leaves and, you know, other stuff, the three maples on the bottom of the site plan, where it kind of turns where our yard is, and the miz, is there any way to push those maples kind of back towards the arborvitae, you know, so kind of the leaves kind of fall more into, you know, the property that would be cleaned up by, I'm guessing, landscapers? That's all I have today, thank you.
So you'd like the...
Thank you, Brian.
We can do that. We do our own...
You want me to respond?
Yes, Marian, go ahead.
Okay, so on the plan, you'd like to show the red maples closer to the line with the arborvitae. Right now, they're purposely, they were purposefully placed quite close to the lot line, thinking that you would prefer them to be there. I know that there has to be some separation in order to have good root development and everything, but I think that they could be pushed back, and we can ask the engineer to show that on the plan, just to push them back a little bit closer. They'd probably be more in a row, instead of, you know, scattered along the corner here. I'm trying to see where your property is too. Let's see, it's right here, right? Yeah, so those are the three trees. Those are the three trees that you want to move back, the ones at the corner.
That's not a problem.
So Paul, did you hear that comment, and can you make that change in the plan?
Yes, hello. Just for the record, this is Paul Gunn from Morris Engineering. We can certainly make that change to those three red maple. Also, just in addition to the comment that was made previously about the curb at the eastern end of the parking lot near the snow storage, we would also agree with that. Removing that portion of the curb there would make that a much more viable snow storage area.
Okay, so...
So, yeah, all the changes so far discussed, we can certainly make.
Okay. So there is going to be an updated plan, and we may have other things that get discussed too, but an updated plan, probably is one that's dated December 8.
Okay. Great. And I see, Sean, you have your hand up? I don't know if that's from before, and Jim as well?
Thanks, Meredith. Mine is, mine is a very minor point, but consistent with what you've all said, I do appreciate the adjustments that have been made, and the neighbors were terrific, having that onsite meeting, and having the opportunity to speak with Ryan and the other neighbors and listen to their concerns, and having blog present with his engineer to make some accommodations, I think is, it's good work. The only comment I have, and this is a really minor one, where the fence runs parallel to the parking, and the fence reaches its end point, Marian, I think it's a nice, it's a nice detail to have that fence turn the corner. And I recognize there's a 12-inch tree that's there, but if it's possible for that fence to turn the corner and just return back towards that snow removal area, just a few feet, it'd be a nice way to finish off the end of that fence run. Other than that, I have no other comments.
So we have no objection, I mean, applicant has no objection to that change. I'd ask the engineer, though, to show that on the plan, that when you get to the corner, the fence would continue around the corner to the next corner, which is the little jaw, and that's, and just to be perfectly clear, Sean, if you would, I think that's what you're talking about, but after the...
Yeah, even, I wasn't even suggesting to go that far, but if you turn the corner, and you have a return of, you know, three or four feet, it'd be, it'd probably be a better way to treat that corner with a fence than to leave it open. So I'm not even suggesting that you have to go all the way over the bend. I'd leave that up to, I'd leave that up to Bob.
Yeah, it says proposed precast concrete curb, there has to be a note right there. That's where I'm thinking. But anyway, you could also circle it on a copy of the, you know, whatever you want to do, let's make sure we understand what you mean.
Again, yeah, again, it's super minor. It's just a nicer way to end that fence, instead of having it just end right there. Turn the corner a little. Aesthetically, it'll look better for the neighbors that happen to look back that way.
Okay.
No problems, Ron.
That's fine, we can do that. Thank you.
That's great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good point, okay.
Meredith, there are a couple of people raising their hands in the audience here.
Okay. Yep, and we would like to invite them to come forward and state your name and address for the record.
I'm sorry, I think I should have spoke up soon, but I saw people with plans out here, so I didn't know where we were in the agenda.
Great, thank you.
My name is Nick Sesso, and I'm Orion Villard's father-in-law. I originally moved to Milton when the Cookie Factory was a cookie factory. I met most of you folks on the site walk, and you all seem to be very nice people, and I do applaud you for the services that you provide to the town, and I do appreciate your attention to detail if this project does in fact happen. But I have to respectfully submit that this... But I have to respectfully submit that this monstrous parking lot would not happen next to one of your homes. Fence bakery, multiple variances for non-conforming uses have gotten us to where we are today. The Falcone businesses have operated for years without the need for this monstrous parking lot. What is unbelievable to me is that we are talking about compromising and sacrificing not the bakery parcel, but a separate residential parcel. And in so doing, compromising neighbors who are in extreme close proximity to the slot. Mr. Falcone has stated many times that he is not expanding, so if the need is not there, why does he want the slot? I believe that you folks will be here again in the future responding to another application for another variance as Falcone property, properties tramples on his neighbors again. No one likes the term, but the fact is, this is zoning creep and the neighbors don't deserve it. And thank you for the time.
Thank you. And did you state your address for the record?
My family, my family lives at 688 Randolph Ave.
Thank you, thank you. And next, we have
Different house.
Thank you for having us up here to speak.
Hi, welcome.
We're at 18 Pleasant Street, so we are direct neighbors of Bents. We've been there for years and years. Anne Smetaski. 18 Pleasant Street, on the corner.
And JP. JP.
Thank you, welcome.
Thank you. He's
No, I'm at 19 Pleasant Street, Milton. Frank Battaglia. All right, thanks.
Maybe you can repeat that, so it can be heard on the
Okay, Frank Battaglia, 19 Pleasant Street, next door to Bents.
So we, as direct neighbors, do have some concerns in regards to excessive noise and disturbance in the middle of the night due to plowing. We're concerned that our issues have not been addressed so far. And now if there's going to be more parking, more plowing, we're concerned that it's going to be worse. We are woken up abruptly in the middle of the night around 3:00, 3:30, when there's snow or not snow. And it's every half hour to hour, a plow comes and scrapes the ground, whether there's snow or there's not snow. So it's very disturbing. It's very anxiety, stressful, you can't sleep. So we would like it to be addressed so that we can actually be at peace. We're just, we just don't want more, like spaces to have to be plowed. They're going to be there longer and more.
Especially me, I work 80 hours a week and I'll be able to sleep because somebody doing a lot of noise. That's me, I'm very angry right now. And I'm taking a lot to me to coming over here and say what I feel. Because I, when I came over here, I see Mr. Frankoni, I tried to talk to him on the side. Maybe, maybe be reasonable and say, hey, I'm going to take care of your problem. What can I do? He don't listen. And I, I'm going like cuckoo.
Yeah, it just doesn't seem fair, we'd like to just
And that's what I need to say.
Yeah, this is a maintenance issue. It's 3:00 in the morning, the plows coming, it's very loud. And he's, you know, very destructive to the residents. And I feel if he has more spaces, that's more time that he's going to be out there making the noise with this loud truck. And there was, last time was 3:00 in the morning, on a Sunday morning. We had no snow at all. It was just bare ground, it was raining. It didn't start snowing until in the afternoon on Sunday. And I don't know what he was plowing. I don't know, he just wants the money or whatever. But it's very, I couldn't sleep at all. I was waking up several times and he comes back with the sander, this and that. So if he has a lot more of a parking spaces, that's longer that it's going to be disruptive. So I'd like to address the issue of the time that the guy comes. If it can be before, after 6:00 or before 6:00, at a reasonable time. You know, Mr. Falcone stated that the plows are out all that time. They only come by once. And I, you know, I've been living there for 68 years. I never deal with this before, you know. And he did a great job on the building and all that, I'll give him that. And the fence, and he had all the, you know, he did all the upgrades to it and satisfied me, you know, with the fence. But this is an issue that's going to be addressed. So that's all I really have to say.
So is anybody can help? Because I'm, I'm done.
So Meredith, would you like for the applicant to respond or give them
Yes, I was going to ask if he, yeah, if you would like to respond, Mr. Falcone, and just let us know if there's, there's a time that you can limit the snow plow that's not disruptive to the neighbors?
I just tried to talk to him, but he don't listen.
All right.
Okay, we'll give them an opportunity to respond.
Yep.
This is Bob Falcone. I was literally attacked coming in the door, asked, I said to him, I would, I said to you, sir, that I would talk to the plow guy. Okay?
No, you don't say that.
He's your next-door neighbor, he lives right up on Randolph Avenue. So I think what happens is, his office, it's John Driscoll. He comes out of the Copeland Building up the street, and I believe it's probably their first stop on their way to their jobs. So I will be glad to talk to John and ask him to come a little later. But unfortunately, if there's an inch or two of ice, that's a hill. And if someone slides down, they're going to end up in your yard.
It's not, well, they actually push snow onto our
Four years ago, that happened.
I've never had a problem.
No, because I'm not going to argue, because we took care of it. You, it was very nice, I love, I even fixed your fence. I, I took responsibility, we took responsibility.
Meredith, I think we can't have this back and forth between
Yeah, I was going to say, all right, thank you. Bob has said that he will address that. Does the board feel we should tie the permit to this application, to a certain time for plowing? Or is that something that we were going to let Bob address?
If I could just make a further comment before you make a decision about that?
Sure.
I do understand that you've had a problem. I do want to say, this particular storm that just happened, and this may have happened many times before to you, but this particular storm, I live on Blue Hill Terrace Street. They plowed that street 15 times, all night long. And there was no snow on the ground, it was scraping, it was loud, I couldn't sleep. I really was upset. That's a public street. I think maybe some of our plow guys were a little bit overzealous. I mean, I'm not blaming them because they were worried about ice and they thought it was going to be worse than it was. So it may have been a particularly bad situation with the last storm. However, what I asked Mr. Falcone about was whether he could, if, providing that there isn't a safety issue, that this particular site that has residences nearby, all around it, that middle of the night plowing, you know, 1:00, 2:00 in the morning would be, is undesirable. And I know John Driscoll, and I will follow up, we will follow up. I want to be careful about having a perm, I don't know whether this belongs in the Board of Appeals or whether it belongs with site plan approval, but it's an issue, it's going to come up. So, and we have a meeting next week. So we would need language that would say, providing there isn't a significant safety issue. In other words, if somebody has to come in the middle of the night because it's sheer ice going up a hill or something like that, I just, I don't know how it should be worded, but there would have to be that
We understand logic.
Revise, so, okay.
It hasn't been, it's been multiple times, and I think finally we've got to the point where it's like, I just can't ignore, it just ridiculous. So, I mean, it's excessive. So it's not even just like 3:00, 3:30, they come like every half hour, then every hour.
Maybe because he's so close, he just is very zealous of parking.
And they sit there and their cars on and their muffler, I don't know if it's not code, but it's super, no, it's super, super loud, it's crazy.
Well, they are loud, yeah.
No, no, the regular plows for the town do not bother us.
Well, whatever he's using. So let me just say, we are going to consult with the contractor who does the plowing. We will come up with some language to suggest that addresses some of the intrusion that's occurring. It's also going to have to consider safety issues and when plowing has to happen.
Common sense, put common sense into it, right?
Yeah, and
Is there a certain amount of snow where they got to come out? I know that's a standard of parking lots, like it's got to be like three inches before they come out.
No, absolutely not.
Two inches or whatever.
Jim, I'm sorry, sorry, please finish.
APW would probably have to provide if there were a standard, or we might, they might already, but we'll have to look into that, I don't know what it would be. I'm sure there probably is something, there will be something for the public streets, of course, but this is a parking area. There is a hill there, so that's, makes it a little bit more difficult.
I would just ask Marion that you also consider that there are residences here? So that the people who live here, you know, would need to be afforded this, the safe opportunity to get home and to leave, you know, like for work hours, for example.
Well, that's what I'm trying to explain. That there is a certain balance, but there, but you're telling us that it feels excessive, that's too often, and it seems noisier than it needs to be. So that's something we have to discuss with the plow contractor. And I just hadn't, well, I'm not involved on a day-to-day basis with managing the property. Certainly you would want to continue to express concern if there's a continued problem and this isn't resolved by whatever rule or standard we set. And, but since you brought it up at this hearing, I think it could be, it would be addressed in some fashion.
Yeah, we really appreciate it.
It'd be a certain time, like in the morning, like 5:00 or 6:00?
Well, 3:00, 3:30 is a little
3:30 is very excessive.
Yeah, maybe between midnight and 6:00 or something like that.
Back and forth, I don't know if he's getting paid all those times, but I don't know.
So
Before you leave, if you would just give me contact information?
Yeah.
I do know you, Frank, but I don't know you. And then if I have more information or I want to say this is what we're thinking about, it would be helpful. So I'll just give you my sheet of paper and email address or telephone number, it would be great.
I just try, I just try to avoid this because I thought to him, to my old side, if he say I go to fix the problem and go home, no problem. We'll make it longer.
I think we, we'll, we'll do our best to improve the situation for you.
Appreciate you listening.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And Jim, you have your hand up?
You know what, I, so what I know about that property is that hill is very steep and it gets a ton of shade, it doesn't get any sun. And ice, when I owned the place, was a huge problem there. It's a, I can see exactly what the plow driver is doing and why, because it's an incredible liability. And now with residential people upstairs coming out, getting into the cross, it's the same thing. I like the idea of trying to limit it, but, you know, plowing is a very subjective thing where if you don't hit it just right and you get ice, a truck will never make it up that hill. So just be careful when putting limitations on it, that's all. And I don't want to dig it up. I think, I think Marion and residents have come to a nice conclusion here.
Yeah, likely it was salting and sanding more than plowing, so, yep. Okay, great, thank you. All right, is there anyone else from the audience who would like to address the board?
It's not looking like Meredith.
No one else, okay. Great, then. Marion, did you have a date in mind that you would like to have this public hearing continued?
Well, at least a week or two weeks. We have a meeting next week with the Board of Appeals. They're kind of in the same situation, of course, because they want to hear back from you. So I'm asking you not to delay it too long.
Yeah.
I have a memo that I have to send back to your board, there's a couple of revisions to the plan. And we need to work on this plowing issue and how we can try to address that. So I would say maybe two weeks, I mean, I already heard you talking about your schedule.
Yeah, 25th?
Yeah, 25th, maybe?
Well, the 25th is pretty far. I was going to say, would the 8th be able to, would you be able to do the 8th of February?
8th of February, of course, yeah.
That would be probably best, so.
That would be great. And that would be very helpful, and then that way I can tell the Board of Appeals that you'll be meeting again on the 8th of February, so, thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. So if I, with that, if I could have a motion to move the public hearing for 7, 9 Pleasant Street, or continue to the public hearing for site plan modification to February 8th?
So moved. I'm 705, so moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, roll call, all in favor? Jim?
Yes.
Sean?
Yes.
Cheryl?
Yes.
Maggie?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Great, thank you all. At this time now, Marion will welcome you back to introduce the, a new business of A&R application for 1439 Brush Hill Road and 85 Henway Drive. And Tim, if you would like to make any comments and open this up?
Yes, and, you know, this is an A&R, which, you know, just for the uninitiated home, stands for Approval Not Required. This is a type of subdivision that is allowed without a public hearing if it demonstrates certain characteristics, the primary of which, and Marion will get a little more into this, is, you know, sufficient access to a way for new lots. Typically, these are pretty boilerplate and not rubber stamp, but quick affairs. But there have been a number of different A&R subdivisions and other types of applications for this area. It is a highly ecologically sensitive area adjacent to Fall Meadow. It's a private way. There's all sorts of little intricacies and stuff around this that I think, you know, even judging from the history of the site that Marion provided, I think demonstrates a lot of the sort of, again, intricacies around this one. So I don't want to steal Marion's thunder, she's got a lot more research and information about this and can explain, you know, what is being proposed here. So Marion, I think, Josh, are you able to share screen or I can do that?
I got you, Tim.
Okay, while you're doing that, I just introduced myself. I'm Marion McHattick, and I'm representing the applicants for this application, Susan and Arthur Murphy, who live at 1439 Brush Hill Road. And I'm here tonight with Claudio Sala from DeSalle Sala Associates. And he is the engineer and surveyor who laid out this plan for us. It may, there may be questions about specifics in the plan, so he's agreed to be here tonight to answer questions, which is very helpful. So that, this, this is the plan, okay. So first of all, I filed this application on October 20th, 2023. Planning Board, as you know, has been extremely busy with a lot of other things. And so we were, we had to put off having this meeting and to initially get into a discussion of the application. But the planning board has had quite a lot of material that I gave them, and I want to just review, well, I'm going to go through the general's information about this application and then just mention to you that I gave you a lot of background material. I didn't just give you the site plan, the A&R plan that shows the division of this lot. I gave you other A&R plans that have been approved, including a plan that shows a non-buildable piece of land with frontage on Avenue A that will, if this plan is approved, will then be sold to the Murphys so that they will have the frontage that they need for these lots.
so that they will have the frontage that they need for these, these lots. So, this A&R plan is dated September twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-three. It divides the lot, which is six point five four acres, at the end of a private way, Avenue A, and combines the lot with a twenty-two thousand nine hundred and eighty-two square foot parcel of land with frontage on Avenue A, Lot A four. That is from an A&R plan that has been approved and is on record. The applicants have entered into a purchase and sale agreement with Matthew and Amy Scheller to acquire Lot A four, but it would be contingent on approval of this plan by both the town of Milton and the town of Canton. The remaining lot, six point five four acres, that's the existing lot at the end of Avenue A that's owned by the Murphys, that is shown as Lot A on a recorded nineteen sixty A&R plan. The only reason there was an A&R plan in nineteen sixty is that a very small sliver of land at one end of this lot was conveyed to a neighbor to provide an easement for some utilities. And as a result of that necessity, there had to be an A&R plan approved, and just as would have to happen here, that A&R plan had to be approved by both the town of Milton and the town of Canton. And that plan was approved with a lot with an existing house and the limited thirty feet of frontage at the end of Avenue A, which is always what happens with the lot that's at the end of one of the subdivisions. Lot A is approximately evenly divided between Milton and Canton, and there is an existing house, a lot of the houses in Canton. Canton, the property owners here pay property taxes to both Canton and Milton. So, Milton's requirements for a lot on an A&R plan in this residence AA district are eighty thousand square feet of area and a hundred feet of frontage on a street. And frontage and required lot size is defined this way. This is in the definitions that are in our updated zoning bylaws. The frontage of a lot is the distance measured in a straight line between the points where the side boundary lines of the lot intersect the sideline of the street, which provides access to the lot. At least eighty percent of the required frontage, measured parallel to the aforementioned straight line, must be maintained without interruption for a distance of at least seventy-five percent of the required frontage. Whenever I read this, I always go to the engineer and say, please tell me whether this lot conforms. I mean, I basically find it difficult to understand, but those who've been dealing with Milton zoning for many years, and Claudio Sala and DeSalle Burke are one of those engineering firms, they're fairly used to it. I do want to point out to you, though, that long before we brought this application to the planning board and to, and we, the applicants discussed it, and I discussed it with our building commissioner, Joseph Prondak, he's now moved on to be building commissioner in Needham, but he reviewed this plan very carefully, and we also took it to the town of Canton and had them review it in a preliminary fashion. And the purpose of that was to find out whether we were going to run into problems when we actually presented the plan, and then tried to build on these lots. So, we wanted to know whether the lots met the zoning requirements in both towns. And in the case of Canton, Canton has a slightly wider side setback requirement of thirty-five feet than Milton's, thirty, which is thirty feet rear setback, that is. And so, the applicants are going to have to take about five feet off a corner of their screen porch in order to meet that setback requirement. They're not going to do that, they'll show it on the plan, but they're not going to do it unless the plans are approved, because they don't want to alter their house, you know, if they're not going to get anything out of doing that. But that's how thorough the review was, and so, I'm pretty confident that these, that these lots, the two buildable lots that are shown on this plan, meet both Milton and Canton zoning requirements.
Marion, before you go on, can I just ask a question?
Sure.
Okay, just a question on that. The, the plan that was stated in Exhibit A, it showed that for Lot Two, the Milton area requirement to be eighty thousand, but then it's noted that it's seventy-three thousand three hundred and twenty-five. So, I, I, it seems like that's the last of the required.
Is that right, or is that reversed?
Cheryl, could you repeat that, it was, sorry, hard to hear you, maybe speaking to your microphone?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I had turned that off for a moment.
That's right, thank you.
Had to do with, the zoning requirement listed in Exhibit A says the minimum lot area is eighty thousand square feet, and then on the plan, it says Lot Two, that the Milton area is seventy-three thousand three twenty-five. But does that mean just the part of the land that's in Milton?
That's the part of, no. Maybe Claudio should explain this, but remember, what we're doing here is combining a twenty-two thousand foot additional lot, which is being combined, part of that lot is going to Lot One and part of it's going to Lot Two. And so, the final, in order to meet the area requirement.
Right. Okay. This, this sort of, wow, this sort of requires a little background. I think you, you recall the, there was a plan done recently that created Lot A four, which the applicant will be purchasing, that was done by BSC Group and approved. Unfortunately, what happened was, is, it's one of my pet peeves with surveyors that don't quite understand things, but when they cut out the land for the MDC or DCR, the DCR wanted nothing to do with owning the roadway or maintaining the roadway. So, BSC Group inadvertently called the center line of this road a, how did they put it? A fee line, as if it's a private way when you owe fee to the center line. And in effect, they created a property line halfway, half of the road became a separate parcel inadvertently. They did it inadvertently, but they did it. So, when you have that seventy-two thousand square feet, a seventy-three thousand square foot lot, area on Lot Two, you also have to include what is shown as Lot Three B, which is a fifteen-foot strip of land, which is half the roadway, and that's the rest of it to get to the eighty thousand. That will be, because it's a separate lot, we have to keep it as a separate lot until we combine them with this plan again. It's, it's just kind of a-
Thank you for explaining that, please. I don't know if I ever understood it until now.
When I saw it, when I saw the BSC Group plan, I'm like, wow, what did they do? And it's just, you know-
So, maybe your narrative, Marion, we'll have to-
Require some correction or clarification.
Yeah, some explanation, just for the long-term record, I think. It makes sense the way you've explained it now?
Yeah, no one picked up on it and just-
Well, I'll work with Claudio, and we will give you an updated description of how the pieces of land are combined to create the required area-
Thank you.
For each of these lots.
Okay, great, thank you.
And no one in my office picked that up, but me. So, it's like, come on, guys.
Okay.
Somebody's grateful that we did, right?
Thank you. So, without getting into quite that level of detail, I will say that when, after the pieces are combined, each of these lots meets the area requirement for both Milton and Canton.
And I guess somewhere that's going to need to be on this plan, like, you know, one, two, three, and then total, what the total area, because it's not clear on the notations on the plan, or did I miss it?
If you look at the proposed, if you look at the proposed lot areas-
Okay, got it.
In the middle, it's a note.
Okay.
It will, it will explain how the parcels are combined. Does it give you the total acreage for each?
It gives me total, I don't know that it's separated by town, but-
No, it shouldn't be separated by town.
It shouldn't be.
There's no reason to separate it by town. It's, it's just, towns have their own bylaws about how much area you need, but the, no, I want the, we need, that's correct, because you need the total area for each of these lots. Now, Lot Three is a non-buildable lot, and the purpose of creating that is to, is because it has been requested by, of us or by the applicant, that by DCR, that first of all, if possible, they would very much like some land donated to DCR on that end of the lot, which is closer to Fowl Meadow. But also, they want the shape of that parcel to be such that it creates a connection between that parcel and the parcels that have already been donated to DCR by the Scheller family. So, they have, they have a direct connection by, this, this lot, this plan was redrawn several times in consultation with DCR in order to do that. But that is not a buildable lot, it's marked, it's identified as a non-buildable lot, and in fact, there is a lot restriction on this parcel, on this whole area of land, that no more than two buildable lots or two houses, or however you want to describe it, can be built. And so, that's, it's okay to create a parcel, but it's not a buildable parcel, and you can't place a house on it or anything like that. And in fact, if all of this gets approved, that parcel will be conveyed to DCR, and it will be permanently open land.
So, just another question about the parcel being in two different towns. So, I'm understanding now that the parcel is actually a hundred and thirty-six thousand four sixty-seven, and part of it's in Milton, Empire and Canton. So, it meets both the requirements, the square footage requirements of both towns. So, thanks for clarifying that. And it is here under the proposed lot area, so you, you have it on the plan, so thank you. I just didn't catch it off.
Quick question?
Yes, Jim, go ahead.
So, Marion, besides Lot Three, which is going to be due to DCR, can you just tell us what other lots on this map, I'm looking at Exhibit A also, are DCR property, like, what are they trying to connect? You lost me there.
If you look at the top of this plan-
Yeah.
You'll see Block Ten, Lot One F, Commonwealth of Massachusetts. Do you see that? Middle, top right.
I got One B, I got One E, yeah, I'll find it, okay. Yeah, okay.
Now, you also, though, I mean, it's really important to look through all of the enclosures that I gave you with this application, because I gave you the A&R plan that the Scheller family had created, which is Exhibit B. And that plan will show you very clearly the small lots, the various lots on the Scheller property, all of which, except for Lot A four, were conveyed to DCR. So, the Schellers own the lot in the middle that has their house on it and has a circular driveway? Yes, thank you, it's up on the screen now. And Lot A two was conveyed to DCR, and Lot A three was conveyed to DCR. Lot A one is the lot owned by the Schellers that has their house on it. Lot A four is the lot that will be conveyed by the Schellers to the Murphys, providing both Milton and Canton approve this A&R plan, because that lot provides necessary frontage for these lots.
Gotcha, so A two and A three are going to DCR?
They belong to DCR, yes.
They do right now?
They do, they've already been conveyed to DCR.
Now, I see, yeah, I'm trying to like soup, like, like, put one map over the other to figure this out. So, I get Lot Three makes this work, I see, okay, thank you.
Okay.
Great, you can continue, Marion, thank you.
Okay. So, just quickly, applicant's existing lot straddles the line, single lot, subject to property taxes in both towns, subject to a twenty-year renewable lot restriction recorded in two thousand and fifteen, that no more than two buildable lots may be created out of fourteen thirty-nine Brush Hill Road, which also has an address of eighty-five Hemmon Way Drive, even though it has no frontage on Hemmon Way Drive. And that, this, these are identified as two assessor's parcels, one in Milton and one in Canton. The proposed plan depicts one vacant buildable lot, Lot Two, one lot with the existing house, Lot One, each of which dimensionally conforms to both Canton and Milton zoning requirements for area and setbacks. Conforming frontage for Lots One and Two is shown on the A&R plan. Lot Three shown on the plan is not a buildable lot, as I explained, it has no frontage. If this A&R plan is approved by Milton and Canton, the applicants will convey Lot Three to the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, and it will become part of the DCR reservation. We provided a lot of documents with this application, and the, the reason for that is twofold. One is that you needed several plans in order to understand which, how the small lot that would be added to the Murphy property was created, and that it's already an approved, on an approved plan that's been recorded. I also wanted to show you some other A&R plans that have been approved fairly recently. One of them is on Avenue A, it's a little further back down Avenue A towards Brush Hill Road. But again, it's on this same private, it's the same right-of-way private way, which has the dimensions and existing condition that this way has. I did provide you with a recorded nineteen twelve plan. This is the original subdivision plan for this area of now two private ways, Avenue A and Avenue B. And it shows the access to these lots and the original plan for the lots on Avenue A, and this, this lot is the lot at the end of Avenue A. I also gave you a copy of the nineteen sixty A&R plan that created this lot, nineteen, and then I gave you a nineteen eighty-four A&R plan and decision for a new lot on Avenue A. This particular A&R lot was not approved by the Milton Planning Board, was appealed, that decision was appealed to the Massachusetts Appeals Court in nineteen eighty-four, which approved the A&R plan and determined that there was adequate access to the lot from Avenue A. And that's a, that's an important case, because it does determine some of the factors that you would normally need to decide in order to approve these new lot, this new lot. I gave you the two hundred, two thousand and fourteen A&R plan approved by the planning board for Lot Two B two on Avenue A. And finally, I gave you a copy of a two thousand seventeen A&R plan. This is the plan subdividing the Scheller family land on Hemmon Way Drive and Avenue A. The reason I gave that to you is that Hemmon Way Drive is also a, a twelve-foot paved right-of-way. It, it's a thirty-foot, I think it's a thirty-foot right-of-way, which is, these dimensions are the same, basically, as Avenue A, although Avenue A turns into a twenty-foot right-of-way towards the end part. And it is now throughout, from beginning to end, at least twelve feet of pavement. And I, there was a, it's quite important for you to understand, I, we met with the planning board back in two thousand and seventeen. I'm not sure whether anybody is on the planning board now, you, Cheryl was here. And to talk about, it was an informal meeting, and we said, you know, if we were considering creating this new lot, what would we have to do? And basically, what the planning board, there was some discussion, neighbors and so forth discussed it with us. The planning board said, go back to the Conservation Commission and first determine what the Conservation Commission will permit you to do to improve this roadway. And the road you see on this plan now, which has a twelve-foot pavement width, has been improved under an order of conditions from the Conservation Commission in the way that they allowed us to do it. And in fact, that approval was appealed and went to DEP, so there's a superseding order of conditions that determines that we could, that they were able to make these improvements and create, what they had to do was they had to dig up the roadway and they had to flatten it, because over the years, a big hump had developed in the middle of the road, the pavement had deteriorated. The drainage was broken that runs into the edges of this roadway and was eroding the roadway. All, the neighbors who have responsibility for these roads got together and applied for a separate order of conditions in order to repair the drainage system. That happened first, that's why this has taken so long. Then finally, the Murphy family was able to apply for an order of conditions to do roadway improvements. The planning board, the Conservation Commission did two sight walks, there was a lot of discussion with, with everybody, and the resultant plan said, you can improve this roadway up to the twelve-foot pavement width. You can flatten it, you can dig it up, and, and there were some requirements for particular characteristics of the drainage running along the side of the road to protect a stream that goes under the road, there's a culvert part way up this roadway. And so, we're back here before the planning board now, having done that step of getting approval for a twelve-foot pavement, and having actually made those improvements, which were necessary anyway for safe access to the lot at the end of this road. So, I gave you a copy of the order of conditions too. If you really want all that, it's here. If you really want all that, it's here and it's, it will help you understand, I think, why we are proposing what we're proposing. It's not of great importance, but there is also a 2015 recorded restrictive agreement. I'm sorry. There was an agreement with the 2014 A&R plan that the new owners of that lot on Avenue A had to put $5,000 into a maintenance fund that was going to be used to maintain the roadway, because up until that time, the Murphys were the only people who were using it and they were responsible for the entire length of the roadway from the end of that new lot that was created. So what's critical about this really is, this application is the definition of a street. And the general laws, Chapter 41, Section 81p, requires that the Planning Board endorse a plan for two lot, for new lots, approval not required, if the plan doesn't require subdivision approval. If a plan shows lots with the required area and frontage on a street, it does not require subdivision approval, because subdivision approval is about the layout of new lots on new streets. The Milton zoning by law then steps in and gives more information, because the Milton zoning by law defies street, defines street in three possible ways: as a public way, a way on a plan endorsed by the Planning Board in accordance with subdivision control law, or, and this is what applies here, a way in existence on February 10, 1938, when we adopted zoning in Milton, having in the opinion of the Planning Board sufficient width, suitable grades, and adequate construction to provide for the needs of vehicular traffic in relation to proposed use of land abutting thereon and served thereby, and for the installation of municipal services to serve such land and buildings erected, et cetera, et cetera. So there have been several A&R plans approved on Avenue A using these standards. The remaining issue for this applicant has been the part of the roadway after all the other residents. Because that was in the worst condition. And the reason for that is it was only one lot owner responsible for that entire length. It's a very expensive proposition to have to upgrade a road and to pay for it yourself. Normally, of course, the town does it. And the Murphys did want to do it. After they moved in, they had several medical emergencies. They have had ambulances up at their property. They've had fire engines and, because when you get an ambulance, you're always getting a fire engine. They've also had people who lost their way and got up, went up there and turned around in the cul-de-sac and then were directed back to Avenue B. So they spent, considerable, probably three years at least, working on repairing the drainage, getting their order of conditions, completing the work that was allowed by the order of conditions, and then getting DEP to sign off and signing it, and filing required documents saying that the work had been done at the Registry of Deeds. That has all been completed now. The underground drainage structures have been repaired and are no longer, you know, causing deterioration in the road. And their own roadway improvements have been completed. So the surface towards the end of Avenue A now is a level surface. The roadway gradually rises up, because this lot is higher up, it's at a higher elevation. But the road is flat instead of having a hump in the middle. And it is 12 feet wide, there's 12 feet of new pavement. There's one little area over the culvert, over the stream, that has been left. It hasn't been repaved, because that's a very sensitive area. And the DEP and the Milton Conservation Commission both said, you know, "We think you should just leave that section exactly the way it is." And that's, and it has stayed that way, the way it is. When you go up to this property, you can see it on the map here. Well, maybe I can't actually, because it doesn't show the turnaround. But the Murphys have created a paved, large paved turnaround on their property, equivalent to anything you would see in a subdivision, actually. And there's plenty of space for emergency vehicles to turn around at the end of the road. So, in my opinion at least, the standards for accessibility have been satisfied for this application. And this rather somewhat complicated plan, if you can understand it, it does create two lots that meet Milton's zoning standards for lots. And it creates one non-buildable lot that would be conveyed to DCR. So because these, the roadway is safe and accessible for all types of traffic, has recently, in fact, been completely rebuilt on the Murphy end, and because these lots meet the zoning requirements for a lot in terms of frontage and area, I believe that this application should be approved by the Milton Planning Board. That does not end this process. We then would have to take this application to the Town of Canton and do the same thing. So we'd have to meet with the Canton Planning Board and see if they are willing to endorse this plan as approval not required. I did meet with the Town of Canton before we began this process and asked them, "What order should we do this in?" And they said, "You should go to Milton first, because the access to this lot is in Milton and access is going to be in issue." So that's where we are. That's a summary of a lot of material that I gave you. Be happy to answer questions, both of us would be. And if there's more information that you need, we'd be happy to try to provide it.
Great.
Meredith, Mary?
Yes, go ahead.
I couldn't hear Meredith. Are you speaking, is she speaking?
Sorry. Yes, can you hear me? Yes, go ahead, Cheryl.
She's muted.
Yeah, no, she's not muted, but we can't hear her.
Can you hear me now? Is that better?
Yeah.
Yes, please, go ahead.
Okay, thank you. Thanks, Marion, for a very detailed packet. I appreciate that. I was on the board for that 2017 A&R, and so this is familiar to me, but it's also nice to have the full record. I'd like to suggest that we do a site walk, which is what we did back then, to take a look at the condition of the roadway. I do remember the house being up and elevated and having the turnaround. It's a beautiful property there. So that's my suggestion.
We'd be happy to do that.
Other questions?
Yeah, I just have a question, if you don't mind. I'm just wondering, basically, and I don't need to know exact numbers, but what percentage of, like, the property tax is paid to Canton and what is, how much is paid to Milton? And maybe that doesn't really matter, but my thinking was, if the greater tax is paid to Canton, I would think that they would have more of a jurisdiction than Milton does. And I would, then that leads to my question, is what happens if one town, if one town, you know, approves it and the other town doesn't? So I would think the town that receives the most in property tax would have more of a jurisdiction, but I could be wrong.
Do you want me to answer that?
Yeah.
Yes, Marion, go ahead.
I don't know exactly what the, I know a substantial tax is paid to each town. And also, remember, we're talking about creating a new lot that will have a house on it. And it depends on how much of the house is in Canton, how much is in Milton, how much land is in Canton. It's fairly evenly divided in terms of land right now, but with these new lots, I'm not gonna, I'm not even going to try to explain exactly what the different tax assessment would be. However, I will say this. This lot, these lots cannot be created unless both towns approve them. So there's no such thing as one town approves it and the other one doesn't, and you can go ahead and do something anyway. This is a difficult, this is a tricky situation for the owners, because they are in both towns. They need approval from both towns. Canton, as I explained before, Canton advised that we go to Milton first, because they said, "You're going to be using the private way that's in Milton coming off Brushhill Road in order to get to this lot." And so we think that the Town of Milton should make their decision first, and then you can come to us and we'll consider it.
Thank you.
And the other question was, and the neighbors, were they notified and are they in agreement with it?
I think some of the neighbors are here tonight and will be talking about it, but the Murphys, who should be on this call, by the way, they have been talking with their neighbors for years about this land and what to do about it. And some of the neighbors are trying to put land into, additional land into conservation. They're getting a tax benefit from doing that. The Murphys have been exploring those options. And of course, the land that's donated to DCR would represent a small tax benefit to them. They would be able to get some tax benefit from that. If the land is not approved as a separate buildable lot, it has relatively little value for those purposes, for donation to some entity. If the lots are approved as buildable lots, they have substantial value for donation. In other words, if a property owner has the type of assets that would allow him to consider donating substantially valued land to DCR or to some other entity, they might do that if it's financially beneficial to them at any given time, depending on what other transactions they're involved with, if the lots have value and they'd get a substantial tax benefit. So that's a very circular way of my saying that I fully expect that if you approve these lots and Canton approves them, that probably the lot will be developed. But the owner also would have the option of donating land that is now worth quite a lot and getting a substantial tax benefit by doing that. That's what happens here. And in this particular situation, I couldn't tell you what will happen for sure. I don't know if Susan or Arthur Murphy want to...
Susan's joining.
Yeah, Susan, did you want to say anything on that issue? Or maybe not, we'll move on.
She's allowed to speak, but... She's allowed to speak, so please, Susan, feel free to join us if you would like to comment.
Marion, I had a couple of questions.
Sure.
Currently, this property has two buildable lots, correct?
No. That's a common misconception.
Okay, because there is an understanding...
This is one lot with a town line running through it. And everybody looks at it and says, "Oh, there's two lots there."
All right, so there's not a buildable lot in Canton?
No.
All right, that was the first...
The town line doesn't create a lot, but there's land in Canton that gets taxed in Canton.
Great. I just, there had been some neighbors who thought that there was a buildable lot in, on the Canton, that a house could be built in Canton.
No.
The other question is, I know there was a question on where to tie the utilities in to the second lot. How would those utilities be brought in? And that sort of addresses the question, who's responsible for the care and the maintenance of this portion of Avenue A?
The Murphys are.
And who's responsible?
The Murphys are responsible for Avenue A from the end of the most recently created 2014 A&R lot up to their property. And you need to go back, I don't know that I included it with my materials, but there's also a maintenance plan that was recorded. And this is very unusual, a very well-thought-out subdivision, the only subdivision in 1912. There was a maintenance plan recorded at the same time, and it goes into a tremendous amount of detail about who's responsible for paying for what and when, and when owners choose to subdivide their property, when responsibility for maintenance kicks in. And it's basically, once a lot is developed with a house, that that would happen. So right now, at the present time, I guess, work is underway, I think, to develop that 2014 A&R lot. So from the end, at the end of that 2014 A&R lot up to the Murphy house, all of that part of Avenue A is the responsibility of the Murphys. They will not be using, they will be using a well and they'll be having a septic system. So they aren't, there are electric utilities and so forth that run under these, under the roadway, but there's no water or sewer line contemplated. They're not close enough to a sewer line that they have to connect. Does that answer your question?
So their water source will be well water?
Yes.
Completely. Okay. Those were my questions on utilities. And thank you.
There's a utility easement shown on this plan, but for utilities.
Great, great.
Meredith, Ms. Murphy has a hand raised.
Oh, good. Welcome, Sue.
Susan, welcome. You can go ahead and speak. She's unmuted, but we can't hear.
You might have to unmute Susan.
It looks like she's unmuted.
Okay.
It's on your device, Susan, so we can't help you.
All right. Well, she's trying to figure that out. Any other questions from the board members?
Is there anyone else in the audience? The in-person audience, though? Is there someone who wants to speak? Meredith, there's somebody in the in-person audience that would like to speak.
Okay, please, feel free to join us.
That's fine for that, but you'll want to take that microphone out of its stand to speak into.
You sort of walk around with this, is that it? Okay, all right. This is a feel like Hollywood here. So my name is Nick Vinky. I'm in Abutter. I live at 60 Hemmon Way Drive, and I'm also president of the Hemming Way Drive Association. That includes 12 families, 13 families, 12 in Canton and one in Milton. And we all get along. And I'm joined by...
Welcome.
I'm Randy Scott. I'm 75 Hemmon Way Drive in Canton. However, our property is kind of like the Murphys. We pay taxes in both Canton and Milton. And just to say, I did not get a notice about this happening. We did not, and I don't know anybody who had.
So this is a bit going down memory lane, but I guess it's only with Meredith here. So good to see you again.
Thank you.
And let me compliment the board here, because I think it's forgotten, and I see it here in action, that you folks, you do double duty. Not only do you campaign to get elected, but then when you get elected, you have to, you know, you're serving and you have to juggle a lot of difficult situations. So, you know, bravo. And I think people don't appreciate what you folks do. So thank you for that. What I was going to do here is maybe just start with the map here, because I found it difficult to explain to people without coloring it in a little bit, but this is the exact same map you've been looking at before. And basically, what we have here in the green outline, that is the Murphy's property as it is today, that rectangle. And then this little, this mountain here that comes out, or point, that's the property that belongs now to the Schellers, but that would become part of this new property. That would be purchased by the Murphys. And the reason for that is to provide sufficient, that 100 feet of frontage. So you get your frontage here and your frontage here. And then the two lots... And then the two lots, if you will, the two lots with houses, one would be the existing lot, which is this one down here, and that would come up to here, and then would, has the frontage there, and the road would come in. And then the other lot here that has that frontage, and then you have the lot here. And then this is the piece that would go to DCR, go into conservation. As explained in the write-up, there are two wetlands that traverse this Avenue A, if you will. One, a smaller one here, there's a six-inch culvert, and then you have a much larger one here, which was a challenge with the renovations of the drive. Let's see here. Randy, do you want to talk a little bit about your, I should say, Randy is a governor's, what do they call it, honorable citizen for all, has a citation for all the work that he's done on rare species. And that's kind of his hobby, and it's really delivered some things. I know that Natural Heritage couldn't believe what he had found, and they came out, and it was quite exciting, so.
I'd love to talk about it. Talking about blue spotted salamanders, about 10 years ago, we found some. The first ones were identified, I was able to find, on Hemingway Drive, just a little bit further down on Hemingway Drive, up over here. But in the following years after that, these salamanders migrate yearly in the spring during certain conditions. But they live in the uplands here during most of the year, actually underground, they're a subterranean species. So they live in the ground, and they come out and migrate from this upland, and they migrate down into this lowland area that has vegetated wetlands. And it's like a complex, a wetland complex. Now, I believe, because we find blue spotted salamanders on Hemingway Drive, right along in this area, that they do actually live in this area. This is probably ground zero where they live, right in this area that's going to be disturbed. Now, another question came out, and in the following years after that, I was able to locate and find many different rare species in the adjacent, in the area, in this area right here. Rare plants, rare insect, and they're all documented with the state. But I do believe that they live in the ground right here. So I would ask that this project, you know, be stopped, because as it is now, it's already fragmented in here a lot. And I know they live up in the arboretum that's up here, the Wakefield Arboretum. And they do migrate down into this lowland area, which is, which is the swamp, basically, or wetland. And I know there was some discussion of where this house is going to be, either in Milton or Canton, but if you look at this plot, the road kind of runs in here, it would have to be up probably in the Canton side, I would think, because there's wetlands here. You're not able to build here. I don't know what the setback would be, maybe 100 feet or so. So I think it would be probably in this area right here, mostly in Canton, it looks like. I'm just speculating. And that's pretty much all I have. I would ask that you, you know, consider salamanders that are in here.
Right, so I wanted to just, thank you, Randy.
Thank you.
Explain a little bit more. So there's not an issue with acreage. There's not an issue, presumably, with this configuration in terms of frontage. The issue has always been about access. And we have here a 1,700-foot driveway that has no egress, no way of exiting. You only can come in and out through that. And it is through dense forest, and then you have a pretty tricky culvert situation there, a stream that can get quite roaring. In the past, I had an agreement, it was actually a formal agreement, went to Norfolk County Deeds, or at least the permission for the prior owner to be able to drive across my land to get out when they were blocked or they needed to leave. And that was done, and he came and used, made use of that several times. I'd like to talk a little bit about this drive. And, you know, we are really for conservation. Our area has put in over 100 acres in the last few years into permanent conservation, and this is done, for the most part, without any remuneration. So, you know, we feel that we're lucky, we're stewards, we get to live here. And once you build something, and I've seen that now, close hand, unfortunately, basically, all of this gets clear-cut. So you're, you know, that's gone. And the other thing is, we all think about salamanders as being wetland animals. They're actually upland animals. Their habitat is in the upland. So that's, you know, kind of gets us enervated at our association. So let's just talk a little bit about this road. This road was 10 feet. The proposal was to make it 14 feet. We brought in, we did, if you will, a protest, I guess you'd call it, and we had an adjudication, Randy and I and our wives. And the Massachusetts EPA decided, they adjudicated, that this could go through. However, it had to be reduced in size from 14 to 12 feet, and that the swales on the side had to be reduced from three to two feet. So, and furthermore, in the write-up, where they do their adjudication, they talk about it as follows. "The proposed project entails the removal of the existing 10-foot driveway and replacement with a 12-foot wide driveway along a portion of Avenue A for an existing private way in Milton that accesses the applicant's single-family home in Canton and construction of water-quality swale paralleling the driveway." They go on to say, well, they make the point that the Conservation Commission review the driveway with, had its width reduced from 14 to 12 feet, along with the swale from three to two. So, and last meeting it was done, and I was looking at the video, it's amazing now with YouTube, you can go back and look at your, our 2017 meeting here, where the comment was made that fire trucks are eight feet wide. So they need, let's say, 16, a little bit of room maybe for mirrors, so we're talking 17, maybe 18 feet. So something that's 12 feet paved with a very limited swale, and recognizing that we are talking about wetlands on both sides here, and we're talking about basically a bridge, which is pretty tricky to get across. And we had talked at this time that we were doing all of this, we did want to have the bridge improved. And I don't know if we have that little photo there, which is, it's an interesting piece of minutiae, but this is a, what they call a perched crossing culvert. So this is the culvert now, it's two feet, and the, and it's still functional. The problem is, it's perched, which means there's a drop here of about four feet. And wildlife cannot go up, or they cannot, well, they could probably come down and fall, but they cannot go up, and they can't migrate. And this, it was requested to improve this, but because of the cost, it was decided that, you know, the old system would be okay for a single-family house. So, to my understanding, this has always been a private driveway. It has never been a state or a city or town street. And I think the, and for the reasons of egress and entry and exit, we have some particular challenges. Now, sometimes Hemingway Drive is brought up. Well, Hemingway Drive has both exits at both ends. It is also wider. It has a 40-foot right-of-way, and the paved area varies, but it depends on, you have to scrape some of the dirt off. So once you do that, you tend to get up to 16 feet at least in width, and then it's got a pretty good swale on both sides. And the renovation that was, what they call the Hemingway Drive Improvement Program that was negotiated, really, I guess, with the ComCom, that also has a much wider width than this 12-foot that we're talking about here. Finally, I guess I should bring this up here. I did have a chance at several occasions to talk about, back in 2017, about this project with the planning, the planner of Canton, Laura Smead. And her comment to me was, well, you know, this is not something that we would approve here, because in Canton, they are very adverse to having long dead-end driveways, or roads, if you wanted to make it one. So what they do there is they send it to the Zoning Board of Appeal, and her experience was at the time, that very few of them get approved, because it sets precedent, and then you have, you know, a long line at the door. And the current, they have a new town planner, and he's not aware of this project. He was going to make some inquiries. But I think Canton has, you know, a little different perspective on these things. And they also, I think it's important, and I was surprised to hear this, but it's similar to what the Environmental Protection Agency looks at. Their time horizon for both groups is 50 years. So when Canton looks at this, they think to themselves, okay, we have one acre zoning. Well, these two houses could disappear, and we could set up a whole bunch of further houses. And in fact, in the past, that was partly what was being discussed here. So this was the conceptual plan that we just talked about earlier, and that had, here we have what is now Murphy's House. We had that other house here. We had a neighbor over here, Mr. Hicks, putting in a house. And then you have here the tricky that we just looked at, the pipe, the culvert. And then you have on this side, another house. So this is, this was back in 2017, but again, in terms of a zoning, you could push in a lot more housing. And this is the way Canton looks at these things, is it's not just for this year or next year, or when the 10-year, whatever agreement expires, it's what is likely to happen here. And I was surprised as well that the Environmental Protection Agency and all their deliberations, they take automatically a 50-year perspective. For example, when discussing things like the salamanders, are the salamanders going to be around in 50 years? And then they look at things like this, because that's taking away uplands, and that's going to destroy the habitat for the salamanders. And I think, because I wasn't at the meeting where George Camo, who recently retired many years at the, at DCR, he said, you know, we all have a voice at one of these meetings, but the salamanders don't. And, you know, it's, it's true. So those were my, you know, comments I wanted to make. Randy, anything else?
No. Thank you.
All right, well, thank you for your time. Appreciate it, and the diligence that you give to this.
I agree with the site walk.
Thank you very much. That was very helpful. Is there anyone else in the audience who would like to speak? Or on Zoom?
Do you want to give Susan Murphy another try?
She's on excess the whole time.
Okay.
Well, I'll just follow up while we're waiting to see if Susan would like to speak. Marion, what abutters were notified of this, of this plan? Because I'm not sure that...
I don't know if anybody was formally notified. Of course, this thing was filed in October and never scheduled, so I didn't know when it was going to be held. We can certainly... What I did, well, I was a little puzzled by one thing. It didn't look to me as if you had any of this on your, that you would post this. Is that because it wasn't a public hearing?
Yeah, and A&R is not subject to a public hearing. There's no, there's no technical obligation for the board to hear public testimony, although the board often does. There's no notice requirement, there's no butter notification requirement. You know, again, like I said, these are typically kind of cut-and-dry affairs, and so they're not treated, you know, in the same way as a subdivision public hearing, a, you know, a site plan approval or another special permit.
So if you, you have no objection, I would like you to at least post the A&R plan dated as of, you know, this A&R plan. I know there's a lot of other material here. It's up to you whether you want to put it all on your website. But that's the easiest way for everybody to look at it, and there isn't any public, there isn't any public hearing requirement, there isn't any newspaper ad requirement. But as Mr. Vinky mentioned to you, I mean, he was at the hearing, it wasn't a hearing, by the way, in 2017. We had this meeting, Mr. Hicks was there, he's another neighbor. He was talking about doing lots. He's completely backed off from that plan. He doesn't want to do them anymore. He long since abandoned it. But he, he had a plan drawn up to show the lots that you just, that were just pointed out to you. That plan is not current, it's not happening, but, you know, I acknowledge Mr. Vinky's point, which is that something can happen in the future, absolutely. I mean, you know, this is a private way, created on a plan in 1912. This is not a new private way that we're creating here. So there is a difference in the way a way like this may be treated under the Towns, Milton's zoning and under the subdivision control law. But the main points, I thought, that were being made in the presentation we just heard had to do with the salamanders, the environment, the upland, you know. I don't know anything about the habitat locations. I do know about the salamanders, because I represented the Schellers for a series of public hearings for them to, or hearings for them to get a final A&R plan for some of their property. And I think the new owners are still struggling with some of that issue, some of those issues with the Conservation Commission, because there are two lots that were created, but there is, there's a pathway in between the lots. So what I didn't talk about in my presentation is the fact that there will also have to be an application to the Conservation Commission, because there are wetlands near these lots. And all of these issues undoubtedly are going to come up in those meetings. I'm not going to say, I honestly don't know whether they're a bar to doing this development, but they will have to be explored. And they're really not, it's fine for the planning board to look at them, but you should have, you should look to the Conservation Commission first to have their hearings, whatever they have to be. And if you feel that that should happen before you would be willing to make a decision about the A&R lots, I want the planning board members to think about that, then you should instruct us that that's the case. And meanwhile, we'll go back, we have some clarification that we need to do with this plan. It's a little bit unclear, you know, how the lots are combined. I've been talking to the engineer, and I think we could probably give you a clearer plan to explain how this subdivision works as well.
Tim, can I ask you, Meredith, may I ask, Tim?
Yes, yes, go ahead.
My understanding from back when is that what we can look at for subdivisions and approval not required is actually pretty limited. And it actually doesn't, it's not upon us to determine whether it's a buildable lot or not. It's just for us to determine that it meets the requirements for frontage in area and that the way is adequate. So my understanding is that whether it's habitat is really not our jurisdiction. And so it's not really one of our considerations. So I'd just like Tim to confirm that. And then the other thing I'd like to suggest is for all the members to look in your notebooks that you got when you became members, like site plan approval, what we can look at. It's, it is law, in terms of how we do it. We've talked about this a lot in the past, and it would be good for everyone to sort of review that before we talk at our next hearing about it.
Yeah, I mean, Cheryl's right, and, you know, we had, we had a very similar conversation back in 2017, you know, when the last time an A&R came up over here. You know, it is, you know, does a lot have frontage? You know, it is, you know, do, does a lot have frontage on a way? Is the way adequate? And, and so those are, those are, those are the guiding principles the Planning Board needs to look at. Now, the, the reason why, you know, this is the case and why there are other kind of matters that maybe are not jurisdictional is because we're literally just talking about lines on the plan. All right? If and when we get to a point where there is a house being proposed and a building permit being sought for, you know, construction of a home or a driveway, this is when the Wellands Protection Act, you know, comes in, the local wetlands bylaw comes in, you know, what work can you and can you not do within various buffer zones of the wetlands. This entire area is in a, you know, a natural heritage priority habitat zone. And so the provisions of the Massachusetts Endangered Species Act come into play in terms of, and so, you know, when we talk about, you know, the salamanders and other, you know, endangered species, you know, these are not things that are affected by lines on a plan. These things are, are things that are affected by construction, by development work. And we have local, state, and potentially even federal law that, that governs these sorts of things. And so I don't think that the Planning Board, now, you should definitely look at this very critically in terms of the adequacy of the way, the frontage, all of the things that are kind of germane to subdivision. And also have confidence that further down the line, if and when work is actually proposed, that we have processes, procedures, and reviews that are up to the task of, you know, doing what they're meant to do in terms of protecting these habitats and protecting these species.
That's fine. There is, by the way, a rare habit, I mean, we do have the line on this plan. This is not a, a plan for the Conservation Commission, but that line is on here. A couple, I just wanted to, I agree with those, I mean, I, I would say that we are looking for the Planning Board to determine whether we've met the standards for an A&R approval, not for whether the, finally, a determination can be made that the lot is buildable. There are quite a few other issues that will have to be addressed. I wanted to say one thing, though, about future subdivision, which is that this whole area of land currently owned by the Murphys is subject to a lot restriction, which was recorded in 2015 by the then owners. It's a 20-year lot restriction, and it's renewable. And although Mr. Vinkie was not a party to that, he didn't, he didn't sign it, all the other neighbors all around here did. So for quite a long time into the future, this cannot be divided into more than two buildable lots. That's one answer I would give to that concern. And as far as what Canton's going to do with this application or what their other concerns might be, I can't say at this time. We don't have an application before them. We'll have to deal with that. And if we don't succeed, if the applicants don't succeed in convincing the Canton Planning Board that this meets the standards for an A&R lot, then there will be no A&R approval because both towns' approval are required. This is the first step. I don't think by making your determination, you're in any way predetermining what's going to happen in Canton. I, I do think, though, that I don't want to get the application tangled up in what we're going to be having to look at with the Conservation Commission. There are, for example, setbacks required when there's a rare, there's a limit of habitat line on a plan like this. So Mr. Vinkie's quite correct, the, the house is going to have to be on this side of that line, and it's going to have to be set back, excuse me, by a required distance. And the Conservation Commission's going to require a footprint, they're going to want to see a footprint, you know, maximum buildable area footprint before going to, to the Conservation Commission. So I, you, you said you'd be willing to schedule a site walk. We'd be happy to do that. Maybe we could talk about a date for that and then a continuation date, perhaps?
That sounds very fair. So looking at dates, is there for the Murphys, is there, do you want to speak with them and then circulate that to Tim and we can see when members are available? Or do you want to try to set it now?
Well, if we could get Susan on this.
I know.
She's trying, I think.
You have some other matters to attend to. So what I'd suggest is, I'm going to see whether I can reach her by cell phone, just on the site walk, because they may be up in New Hampshire. They have property up there.
Yeah, okay.
And otherwise, for, for continuation date, that's up to the Planning Board whenever they can do it. I know you have a busy schedule.
So are we looking on a Saturday for a site walk? So maybe we could propose a, a Saturday or two that Marian can check with the Murphys about?
Yes. What is, are there some dates that are preferable?
So I'm tied up February 3rd. But before and after that, I'm open for Saturdays. 20th, 27th of January, 17th, 24th of February. I don't know how far we're pushing this out, but that's me.
I'm, I'm the same, Jim, as you. I'm not available the 3rd. But I am available the 20th and the 27th.
Cool.
Do you want me to check?
Sadly, I have no plans, so I'm available.
And I could do either 20th or the 27th, too.
I'm, I'm good for the 20th, but not the 27th. And if we do 20th, I would like to do it early.
Okay. So technically, January 20th?
Do you want to check, Marian?
I will go check on that. Do you want to set a continued date for the...
I think it should be after the site walk.
Yes, I was actually going to say, because now we have public hearings on the 8th is now getting busy. So of February. So I was going to suggest maybe the 22nd.
February 22nd?
February 22nd.
Okay. What about, are you available?
Sure.
I know I am.
All right.
Okay, I'm going to go, so I just didn't want you to have to delay going on with your meeting. So if you set a continue, the date to continue this discussion, then I can go check on the site walk and I'll come, see if I can reach them and come back, and we can finalize that date.
All right. If I can have a motion to continue the public hearing of 1439 Brush Hill Road, 85 Hemingway Drive, until February 22nd.
I think you're going to continue the agenda item.
That's not a public hearing.
I'm sorry, the agenda item, not the public hearing. Agenda item, so we don't need to have a time?
No.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm making a motion to continue the agenda item on 1439 Brush Hill Road until February 22nd at, what, 7:05?
It's not a public hearing, so we don't have to say a time, yeah.
Got you, got you, forgot that.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. All in favor? Cheryl?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Maggie?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Okay.
Thank you very much.
Great, thank you very much, and everyone who joined us on that. Okay. Moving to our next new business item, this is reappointments, the Master Plan Implementation Committee reappointments for Richard Burke and Taber Keely. If I could have a motion to reappoint?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Okay. Roll call. Jim?
Yes.
Cheryl?
Yes.
Maggie?
Yes.
Sean?
Yes.
And myself, yes. And then our last item of, for business is MBTA Communities zoning discussion. When we last met, we decided to hold a meeting next week, so I would like for, you know, our discussion really to be next week on the MBTA Communities. But I wanted to put this on as an agenda item so we could make sure that all items under the MBTA Communities zoning discussion are addressed. Cheryl circulated sort of a checklist, sort of a score system of our, sort of our objectives and goals that we were trying to meet in looking at the districts. Did everybody receive that, what Cheryl had sent out?
Yep, got it.
I don't know, was there anything that people wanted to add to that, Cheryl? I thought that was really, that was really helpful.
Yeah, I thought we would discuss that next week, Meredith, but I thought I'd give people a chance to look at it. So if you have anything you want to add, maybe we can talk about it next week, or you can send it to Tim. And, you know, I can, if you have an idea of where to add it, you know, you can provide that, too. But that was my thought. Meredith, may I just add, can we talk about the scope of the affordability consultant? Because I think last week, Tim thought he might have some information about a conversation with MAPC. Can we do that piece tonight, though?
That's, I would like for, for us to really discuss the RFP next week, but I think we should. Cheryl, I, I think what you sent out was really great because I think it's helpful for Tim to sort of have an idea of what we want to go into that RFP.
Okay.
Because I, along the same lines, had been looking at some other towns and what other towns had been doing, and they also did something similar to what you had sent out. So why don't you go ahead and just open that conversation?
Okay. I don't know if Josh or Tim has the email that I sent. We could just pop it up on the screen. Do you have that, Tim? Or do you want me to call it up?
I, I, I can, I can bring it up.
Okay. Yeah, just as he's doing that, I was looking at the inclusionary zoning policy in Boston. They're doing a revision this year where they currently have a requirement of 13% of residential units to be affordable, and the, a trigger or threshold trigger is 10 units. Their proposal, which hasn't been adopted yet, it's, it's being considered, would change that trigger to seven units. And then they're looking at affordability of 17% for ownership, but 18 to 20% for rental. And they're tying those, that range really, to, you know, we talk about 10% affordable, and it's always at 80% AMI, which is the area median income. But their variable is so that they can also get units that are less than 80% AMI, so maybe at 70 or 50 or 30. And then the other thing that they allow would be the 17% of the square footage as an alternative to 17% of the units. And with that, you can get some larger units. So I just thought that these, and Tim, I know he sent an email back, and so I'd like for him to share his comments with the board as well, because he has some thoughts about that. But I, I just thought it would definitely be useful for the consultant to think about whether rental or ownership would, could be at different percentages and, you know, what the trigger would be. So that's all I have on that.
And I just was going to read, just in reading from the Lexington, and, and Tim, I, did, was this sent out to everybody? Or I know when, when the materials were printed up, this was printed for me on the Lexington, the economic feasibility analysis.
That, yeah, that should be, that should have been in the folder for everybody.
Okay. So it's, if somebody wants a printed out copy, they can get that at the office. Otherwise, it's online. But in just reading from theirs, it was, it was clearly, I think, outlined in the RFP what Lexington was asking for. And I think it's important that we, that we just don't put out general, you know, a feasibility study, but that we actually, what it is that we're asking for in this case, in the scope of work that this consultant did, it states, "The proposed zoning amendment would require any multifamily housing development containing eight or more units to contain 15% inclusionary dwelling units. In addition, an alternative requirement of 20% inclusionary dwelling units is also being contemplated. This economic feasibility analysis will analyze both the 15% and the 20% affordable set aside for both rental and owner-occupied unit, housing units. At the time, it was DHCD, does not define the term economic feasibility, the general acceptable rate of return, given the risks associated with the proposed development project. Although the real estate industry does not have one definition of an acceptable rate of return, residential rental property should yield 10%, and a for-sale development should yield at least 16%. Given Lexington's strong real estate market, we believe the rate of returns may be slightly less." But it seems to be that, and without, I didn't see, look up their RFP, but that, that the, the proposed zoning amendment was asking for a specific study of a certain percentage, eight units or more. So I think that's worth our considering in our RFP. And Tim, I know you were talking about sort of some of the things that you had talked to HLC about, and, you know, they can't, they can't say anything until they see a feasibility study, but...
Yeah, we, we've had some conversations with them. And just one of the questions, I don't know if Meredith brought it up at the meeting or in a conversation with me, I think it was at the meeting. But one thing I made sure I asked, I had a conversation with MAPC, you know, they've been doing a number of these for different communities, just to kind of, kind of scope out, you know, what, what they're capable of and maybe some pricing. But one thing that they said that, that Meredith had asked about is they would need some idea of sub-districts and kind of general zoning, you know, dimensional parameters to be able to do this analysis, you know? So that's an input that they'll need. So, you know, we're, we're not quite there yet, you know, unless the board is interested in doing an analysis on, on the Article I sub-districts, or if you want to wait and kind of suss out your own. But that's going to be something that would be an input for, for this analysis. The other thing, and this is based on conversations with HLC, is, you know, when, when we talk about, you know, the trigger for how many units are in a project, you know, before you have to sort of do an affordability requirement, you know, eight is probably the lower bound of, of, of units that they would consider. So, so basically, if you have a, a three-unit project, which, you know, if, you know, if, if there's a, you know, the smallest multifamily building you can do is three units, you know, you can't get 10% or even 15% or even 20% out of that because you would really need to have a 33% requirement to get a single sort of unit out of that. We could talk about fractional units. We can talk about payments, you know, into the Affordable Housing Trust. But ultimately, what HLC is kind of, you know, indicating to us is that, you know, if you go too low with your trigger, they, they would consider it to be too burdensome to development, you know, and, and kind of non-compliant, you know, effectively, you know, even if it is, you know, technically, you know, feasible, you know, on paper, you know? And, and I think what they're saying is it won't, it won't be feasible on paper. You know, you really do, you know, from, from, from an economic feasibility standpoint, have to have a certain, you know, economy of scale, you know, to, to get those units. So again, nothing is written in stone. This is just sort of guidance that they've, that they're giving based on things that, that they've seen. But, you know, it, you know, 10 units was the trigger that was in the original zoning, just because, you know, it's a nice round number. One unit in a 10-unit project is 10%. We can definitely analyze the feasibility of, of a lower trigger. You know, we can absolutely analyze deeper affordability, you know. We don't have a ton of precedent for different towns doing different things, if only because there's only been a handful, you know, of, of, of zonings that have been passed. But also, I, I haven't heard anything from HLC to indicate that a lot of this stuff is out of bounds. I mean, you know, there's, they, they ask us about, you know, are you doing fractional units? Are you doing payments in lieu? So it's, it's all potentially on the table, and then we can definitely study that. So I would definitely, you know, obviously recommend looking at, you know, we provided Lexington, you know, there may be others that are out there, you know, Cheryl's drawing on the example of City of Boston, you know? The, the big caveat there is that, you know, that policy has not yet been passed. I know they're talking about it. It's been on the docket for a while. You know, it's been subject to rigorous analysis and rigorous debate, you know, in the city. But it's, it's not actually kind of, you know, set in policy yet. So, long story short, you know, I provided a very kind of bare-bones skeleton of, of an RFP, or RFQ, or whatever kind of document it was, but we can definitely get into document it was. Um, but we can definitely get into more specific requests for analysis, um, you know, based on what your priorities are.
Tim, I have a question about that MAPC conversation you had. Did they give you an idea what the costs would be?
Yeah, I, I, I wish, um, you know, I, I do this pretty often where I leave my notebook on my desk. So, but I do recall the conversation that we had, and, and basically, there's a spectrum of, of services. You know, the, the most bare bones thing is the basic analysis that HLC has kind of laid out, you know, in their, um, you know, in, in their guidance for these economic feasibility analyses. Now, there's a, there's a decent amount of data collection that's, that's necessary for that. Um, you know, there is, you know, a decent amount of work. Um, so, you know, somewhere around $15,000 is kind of what they have been, um, you know, seeking from towns for that sort of, you know, very basic analysis. On, on the other end of the spectrum, you know, for towns that are looking at kind of an even broader conversation around affordable housing and inclusionary zoning, um, you know, maybe not just for MBT communities, but for other zoning districts, um, you know, they obviously are, are in the business of, of, of doing planning and going out and doing engagement. Um, you know, so, so there's, there's a world in which, you know, there's a much more public conversation specifically about affordability requirements, um, you know, and the inherent kind of, you know, public forums and, um, you know, surveys and kind of outreach, you know, that goes along with that. Um, that is obviously on the higher end, um, you know, of, of the, uh, the budgetary scale, anywhere between 75, 85, $100,000, depending on how big, um, the engagement is. Um, my instinct here is that, um, you know, we've heard from town meeting, um, we've heard from people throughout this, this process, that, um, there's, you know, I don't think we have to go out and ask people if they're interested in there being an affordability component in the zoning. I think that's something you could take to the bank. Um, you know, so I, I, I think that, you know, obviously, it's up to you all. Um, but I, I think we have done a fair amount of outreach on this, and, and we've heard a fair amount, um, from people, not just in this planning effort, but in, in almost every planning effort done, about the desire to have, um, you know, as much affordability as we can get in these things. Um, so, um, you know, that would be something, I, I mentioned at the last meeting, if, if we go with MAPC, we can contract with them directly. Um, if we want to kind of play the field, um, you know, and, and put a solicitation out there, we can certainly do that. Um, and, and sort of that, that range of, you know, $15,000 for the most basic thing, and then, you know, maybe, you know, setting a price maybe a little bit above that if there are additional facets of analysis that the board wants to do. Um, I will, for next week's meeting, um, I'm gonna stop sharing right now. For next week's meeting, I will have, um, we're, we're kind of closing out our contract with, with RKG. Um, I'll be able to kind of figure out how much money we have left in terms of grant funding, um, from the state for MBT community stuff. And then, um, you know, we'll have to talk about, you know, planning board budget, um, you know, for this, and, and some of the other analyses that you're after. Um, but I'll, I'll have a figure for that for you for next Wednesday.
And Tim, just a quick follow-up. Do you have, uh, can you also have the status of our funding for this fiscal year? I don't recall having authorized use of any of it. Is, is that correct? But anyway, you can let us know next week how much we have available for this fiscal year.
Will do.
That's great. And Sean, Sean has his hand up, if you'd like to...
Yeah, just two questions. Um, one's a simple one, and then I'll go to my second one, which is probably a little bit longer. In terms of closing out RKG, Tim, have they fulfilled every, everything out there of their service proposal, or is it possible that we might be able to have a conversation with them one more time down the road, you know, to further discuss their final submission?
Uh, yes. I'll, I'll double check. Um, yeah, I, I, I say we're closing out because the last invoice that I got from them, um, you know, they said was gonna be their final invoice. Um, so they're, they're not doing any more work. Um, there is some money left on the contract. Um, so, um, but I'll, I'll double check on that. Um, and, and, you know, there may be, um, you know, again, further opt-in, and we'll sort of make sure that that's kind of set aside, um, if the board is interested in bringing them back in, uh, for, for some wrap-up discussion. But we'll, um, I'll let you know how much is left on that contract.
Could be helpful. I, I think, um, given the, the timing of the last submission, now that we've had it, had a little bit more time to look at it, it might be worthwhile to just spend the money to have them prepare it, to make sure that we capture everything we can out of it and ask any questions that we might have. Um, my second question relates back to the feasibility study that, um, that we're discussing, and, excuse me, what Lexington did. It seemed like, um, that consultant modeled their response on a 24-unit. Um, they chose 24 units. And I, you know, so we can get as much out of the feasibility study from the consultant, I, I definitely agree with, um, you know, giving, giving them as much information. I don't know if they came up with 24 units on their own for Lexington, or if Lexington gave them 24 units, and then they said, "This analysis is based on 24 units." I'm not really sure how they arrived at that, but, you know, they came to a conclusion that a 24-unit development works at 15%, doesn't work at 20%. And I think the, the, the return for the developer was like 17%, you know, on a 15% affordability. Uh, but anyhow, I guess what I, what I'm taking away from seeing that Lexington one, um, the better the parameters we create, the more accurate we're gonna get for a response. And it seems like we're gonna have, at least in our town, the likelihood is many smaller developments, right? Not a lot of large developments. And how do we, how do we ask the consultant to address the smaller developments? You know, if you, do you know what I mean, Tim? Because there's gonna be an awful lot of, I, I, you know, I feel like we have to capture something in the smaller developments. How do we go about that?
Um, I mean, in, in terms of, in terms of doing the analysis and asking for the analysis, um, it, you know, the world's your oyster. Um, you know, and, and, and I think that's a, a big part of why they want to see what the zoning districts are, what the dimensional parameters within those are, so that they have an idea of like, okay, we've got a, you know, we've got a district, you know, here where you could potentially have anywhere from a 50 to 100-unit building. You've got a district here where there's gonna be a mix of, you know, seven, eight, 15, 20, 10, you know, units. Um, you know, and, and we can sort of bake in, like, we want to make sure that you're analyzing the full spectrum of, of potential, you know, building types here. Um, in terms of kind of generally, you know, capturing affordability out of different sized, um, you know, developments, you know, you get into, you know, like I mentioned earlier, you know, i- if the, you know, the, the requirement is, is 10%, you know, you, you think about, you know, what, what size project do you have to get to get a full unit? Um, you know, one unit in a 10-unit project, uh, you know, at 12%, you know, it's, I'm not gonna bother doing the math. Um, you know, you start to think about, and when you get smaller than that, then you sort of, you, you, there's a, there's a decision point there where, you know, you can't get a full unit. Um, and do you want to, on those smaller projects, start to say, "Okay, you know, a three-unit project, you know, what is the prorata kind of monetary value of, of affordability that would be applied under whatever policy?" Um, and, and you'd sort of, you know, make that a kind of a requirement on, on, on whatever size development there is. Now, I, I think what you run into there is the, the, the kind of project that, that you're talking about at that small scale, you know, is, you know, a Milton homeowner, you know, that, that wants to sort of, you know, turn their one-family house into a three-family house. You know, these are not, you know, big-time developers, you know, with, with, with huge financing. They've got a mortgage from the bank. Um, does the project become feasible under, under those circumstances? And I think that's something that's worth asking, the analysis of like, like, hey, you know, on the one hand, we've got these really great intentions of capitalizing our Affordable Housing Trust and capturing affordability, but also, we, you know, you know, 15% of zero is zero. So if you don't get any projects out of this, um, you know, you're not doing yourself any favors. Um, so I think that's definitely something to be eyes wide open about. But generally, um, you know, again, the, 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 the super basic thing that the state's asking for, you know, they can do like this. But there's definitely an opportunity, and these, these analyses exist. I mean, the, the Lexington one is really good, that firm is great. Um, you know, MAPC's done a lot of good work, a lot of, a lot more, much more detailed than the basic stuff that the state asks for. So I think having that conversation among yourselves, and I think Cheryl brings up a bunch of good points, um, you know, in, in, in her message, knowing what you want and what you're asking for, um, you know, i- is definitely worth, uh, worth doing. And, and, you know, for, for better, for worse, you do have time, um, you know, because again, they'll need districts and parameters. So like, these conversations may be parallel for a little bit, um, you know, in, in terms of what the board's looking for on, on both of those fronts. But, um, you know, there's, it's a, we haven't done much of it in Milton because we haven't had multifamily zoning, but it is a, it's a wild world out there in terms of affordability requirements. There's, there's all sorts of different things that we can look at, um, you know, for models.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you, Tim. Maggie, you have your hand up?
Oh, yes. Just to follow up, um, the discussion on RKG. Um, so if you can remember when they presented their findings to us right before town meeting, their, um, their, their assumptions were incorrect, their starting assumptions were incorrect. So I'm just wondering if they're gonna provide an, an analysis with correct, um, starting assumptions.
Which assumptions were, were incorrect?
They had, um, different housing units. They had different, um, units from what the state told us. And I think they had different units from what, um, you know, or, or what UTO provided. Not that the unit count was vastly different, but it was different.
I think it was the difference between total households and total occupied households? Because if they weren't full-time occupied households, they weren't counted, I believe. Is that correct?
Yeah, I thought it was more that the, our starting number that the state told us of, yeah, our housing unit count was different than...
I think he used different census, a different, a later census maybe, as well.
Yeah, I mean, Maggie, it would be great. I, I remember this conversation, um, but if you could, if you could just shoot me an email with kind of those specific points. Um, you know, one, one thing here is, this is a function of, um, you know, when, you know, the, the board had to kind of pin down a, a sort of a set of sub-districts and dimensional parameters at a point in time for RKG to kind of do that analysis. Now, those proceeded to change in the, the weeks and months after we gave RKG the go-ahead. So, um, you know, there is an element of, they were modeling a, a slightly out-of-date version of, um, you know, of the zoning. Um, you know, that's something, I don't know if, if that's a heavy lift for them to sort of update that. Um, if it's not, we can certainly have them do it. Um, if it is, we may need to kind of talk about, you know, how to, if that's something that the board really wants done, you know, how do we, how do we budget for that? Um, but those, those other specific things about some of the other assumptions that went in, um, if you could just shoot me an email about, you know, which numbers those are, um, I'll, I'll run those to RKG and see, um, you know, what the explanation is and, and if there's a, a way to rectify it.
Okay, great. Thanks.
Can I, can I just comment on that, just to maybe help out a little bit? I believe, I'm just looking at their first and their second, I happen to have nearby. I think it came down to the total households in Milton, Maggie, because they're, they're using a total household in Milton of 9,235. I think that was the question.
Yeah.
Because 25% of 9,235 is 2,309, which is different than 2,461. I think that was the, that was the data point that we were looking at. Maybe I'm wrong, Maggie, but...
Yeah.
Excuse me. Maggie, if it's something else that you're thinking of, I, I, you know, that's the only one that I had in my notes that we had a question on back some weeks ago.
Okay, well, I'll still, um, I'll look into it as I'm sending it.
Yep.
And then also, just the last thing on the affordability, will the affordable units, um, will they be in perpetuity?
Um, let me get back to you on that. I think so. Um, I think the, um, I'm, I'm almost positive, um, that, you know, units that we create through the LIFT program, um, that's the sort of the state program for, for local action units, um, tend to be, those tend to be in perpetuity. Because there's no subsidy program attached to them. It's internally subsidized by the project. Um, so it's not like a program where there needs to be continual subsidy and that, you know, runs out after a while. Um, but I'll, I'll double check and confirm that as well.
And can we have a local preference in our affordability? You know, we, we always talk about wanting our town employees to have the opportunity to live in Milton, um, and for our kids to return to Milton. So are we able to do a little local preference?
Yeah, we, we can. And, and, and that's something that, I don't know if that gets, um, if that necessarily needs to be written into the zoning. The way, the way that that gets operationalized is, um, if, if that's something that the town is interested in, we, um, you know, for, for any given affordable project, and, and, you know, in, in most cases, the affordable projects are, um, you know, the, the Hendry's project is, is a good example. There were four affordable units. Um, so when that project was beginning its marketing process, um, you know, we send a letter to the marketing agent and say, you know, we want, you know, here's why we think that there should be a local preference. Um, you know, we have all these folks that need affordable housing in town. Um, you know, we would request the maximum allowable local preference under the regulations. And then that gets reviewed by HLC when they're reviewing the marketing plan, um, you know, for the project. Um, and so that's something that, um, you know, sometimes gets written directly into zoning, but oftentimes is, is just sort of like an administrative kind of policy-level decision, um, that gets made. I think we're always interested in as much local preference as we can get. And then it becomes up to HLC to kind of figure out, you know, okay, you know, how much local preference do we want to give, um, you know, to, to a town like Milton? Um, but, um, so the answer is yes.
And Tim, I just have one last question. Um, did, did the consultants give you any time, um, timeframe on how long it would take to do an economic feasibility study?
Um...
Because one thing I would talk about next week is timelines for everything, to be realistic on...
Yeah, so I can, I, I can follow up on that. I mean, it really does depend on the...
How soon we have districts.
The, 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 well, not, not even that, but like, how much you're asking for. So again, if it's like, if it's simply like, you know, the super bare bones, check all the boxes for HLC, you know, fill out the spreadsheet, um, you know, that's a matter of a couple of weeks. Um, you know, the more that you add on in terms of analysis and layers of kind of requirements, um, then it comes a little bit more. Um, but I, I can get some more clarity on that.
And of the towns, um, it sounds like you know of some towns, communities that MAPC's been working with. Um, do you know if any of those have been approved to be 15%? Yeah?
Um, I, I don't, but I can, I can, I can double check on that as well. Um, you know, again, there's only been a handful of these, you know, that have kind of reached the ultimate level of, of review and process at HLC. Um, there's a lot of work being done right now, um, but, but not, not as many have kind of gotten to the final level. So, but I will find that out.
That's great. So, and maybe I was thinking, if you could maybe look at, or send out, or Josh could send out Brookline and Newton's RFPs for their economic feasibility study, because I believe they both have 15% approved.
I'll do that. I will, um, reach out to those folks tomorrow.
Yeah. Okay, great. Terrific. Is there anything anyone else has, or Tim?
Yeah, just, um, just, uh, again, I, I, we emailed it. Um, I forget if it was yesterday or today, but just to call your attention to some of the documents that I got from the town administrator, um, that I, I, I sent out. I don't know if they made it into the folder, but they were emailed, um, and they're up on the MBT Communities website. Um, uh, there is, um, some, some information from Town Council regarding, um, you know, basically the sort of the, the status of, of the zoning article, um, you know, if, if the referendum goes one way or the other. Um, we did get a letter from Secretary Augustus of, um, the Executive Office of Housing and Little Communities, clarifying our compliance status. Um, we're in a little bit of a weird state. Um, the requirement, obviously, uh, uh, is, is for the legislative body to pass zoning, which the legislative body did. But our charter allows for, um, you know, those, um, you know, that decision to be reconsidered. Um, you know, if there's a, a referendum... there's a referendum, which there is. So no other town in the rapid transit cohort is in this spot. So basically, you know, the gist of that letter, and you all can read it yourselves, and members of the public can read it themselves, is, you know, we've got a kind of, you know, everyone's under interim compliance because everyone's zoning is under review. We are still considered to be under interim compliance, the same as Quincy, Cambridge, Newton, Brookline, everybody else. And then a little bit of a holding pattern until the results of the referendum. If, you know, if, if the refer, so if, if yes wins on 13th, then the select board, which is another letter that was in that group of documents, select board is committed to submit a full compliance application, you know, which, you know, which will do. If, if no is successful on the 13th, then, you know, we would, we would consider to be out of compliance. And, you know, that, you know, puts, you know, the impetus on, on that conversation around, okay, now what does an article look like, you know, under those sort of two-year can't come back provisions? That's another area where there's not a ton of precedent and not a lot of example. So town council, I think, did their level best to kind of, you know, put out the state of play over there. But, you know, if you haven't read those already, definitely read them. You know, folks watching at home, those are all up on the town MBTA community's website. And just want to call everyone's attention to that.
Now, if I have a question on that, is now an appropriate time to ask, or should I wait till next week?
I think it's a question you have. Maybe Tim can get the answer for next week?
Yeah, you might, yeah. You might as well.
Okay, I don't want to. So I read town council's memo. So I just had a couple questions. Was one that I, that I heard that when a zoning bylaw is passed by a two-thirds vote, then there is a two-year delay? But if a zoning bylaw only requires a 50%, then there's no delay? That accurate or not?
I don't think that the, the quantum of vote is relevant here. I mean, I can, we can, we can, we can follow up and clarify that. I think really what it is, is, is there a negative action by town meeting? And if there is, then that's, that's what the trigger is. And I think that becomes, you know, that was one of the questions that is, you know, addressed in town council's memo, is, you know, the, you know, town meeting voted one way, the public may vote in the referendum another way. Does that referendum vote kind of count as the town meeting vote, the negative action of town meeting? And I think town council's opinion is that yes, it does. You know, that, that referendum vote is, is technically kind of, you know, taking the place of town meeting. Relative to the quantum of vote or the necessary sort of, you know, number of votes that are needed to, I don't know if that is relevant, but we can definitely ask. But it is more, it is more, you know, did town meeting take a positive action or a negative action? And that kind of dictates whether things can come back.
And then also, like, at the October 23 Warren Committee, Peter Mello said, somebody asked him that question. Somebody asked about the two-year delay. And I went back and I watched it. And he said, and I quote, "According to Section 16 of the Act, there are ways to circumvent the two-year prohibition," end quote. So that's why I was a little bit confused, why back in October, he said there was a way to circumvent the two-year prohibition. And like, in this letter, just a, like, a couple months later, he's saying there's not. So I'm kind of wondering what the, his change was.
I, I took, and again, you know, everyone, everyone can read it for themselves, you know, and take away what they take away. I mean, my read of his memo was that, you know, the case law, there is case law out there. None of it is very definitive. And so there, it's kind of up to interpretation. You know, the, the way that that provision of, of, of 40A, I think, Section 5, there's other, there's other sections that are, that are related, is really sort of about, you know, bringing the same article back multiple times, even though town meeting has said no. And that's what, that's what the law is after, of saying like, you know, we want there to be some measure of, you know, legislative predictability. You know, that like, you know, we know what the state of this law is. It's not going to be around for two years, and we can talk about it next in two years. Now, for zoning articles, you know, if the planning board takes, makes a positive recommendation on a bylaw, then you can bring it back within two years. But then there's the question, and he brings this up, and there's a precedent or a case about this. If the planning board had already taken a no recommendation, can they go back and change that no recommendation? I mean, there's all, all sort of, you know, Maggie, I definitely kind of get your question here, that there was sort of, it seems like there was definitive language back then, and now there's kind of equivocal language now. But I think what town council's memo does is try to lay out, here are all the different ways that you can kind of, I hesitate to get around, but here are the different kind of exceptions to that two-year rule and kind of the relevant case law, you know, relative to our kind of present circumstances. So again, I recommend everyone to read the memo themselves, because I'm not doing the best job of kind of summarizing it. But, you know, it's out there and, and, you know, it's going to be the subject, I'm sure, of a lot of discussion.
Yeah. And so that's what I read the law, you know, downloaded it. And it said that you have to make, you know, specific and material changes in the condition. So I was just wondering if, like, the changing of districts or decreasing unit count in certain districts would meet that definition of a change?
Yeah, I think the trick here is going to be that, you know, as I said earlier, there's not a ton of precedent and example to draw on here. And so what does it mean for the bylaw to be substantially different than the one that was rejected by town meeting? There's not, there's not a very deep playbook on what that means. And so that's going to have to be something that, you know, the board and the town kind of really wrestles with, is, you know, if, you know, if the article goes down in the referendum, what does a different article look like? And it's going to wind up being, you know, again, like I said, I'm sure there's probably something that, you know, we can look at, but there's not a ton. And so it really becomes a judgment call on the part of, you know, the board, the town. Everyone has a role in decision-making here of what it looks like.
Like, I know that there's a discussion going on about two years, but, you know, we have to wait two years. So, as you know, I'm kind of a factual person, and I'm just trying to collect the facts and state the facts. And I just want to know for sure if there's a two-year delay or if there's not, just because I want the residents of Milton to know the facts.
I think the answer is maybe. Or it depends.
Well, that's, yeah, that's, yeah, okay. That's enough for tonight.
Do you have town council, though, like, how would that then be, like, we say we think it's substantial enough, let's just say, as a town. How would that actually get decided? Would it be HLC? Would it be the Attorney General's Office? You know, I guess...
Yeah, I, I, I'll, I'll double check on that. I think that, on a matter like that, because, you know, even though this is MBTA community zoning, and it's up to HLC to kind of talk about compliance, this is generally a zoning thing that would be, you know, subject to review by the municipal law unit of, of the Attorney General's Office. Because this is something that's in state law. Their job is to make sure that bylaws that we pass are consistent with state law. So my instinct there is that that would be an Attorney General's call to make. You know, whether or not they would provide us any guidance ahead of time as to, you know, what, you know, substantial difference may look like, I'm sure we can ask. But, but I think it would be their call ultimately.
Thinking about all the effort that goes into it, and the expense that goes into it, it would certainly work to ask, so we could get guidance.
And does that mean we ask town council to go ask them, or, and Tim, you go directly to them? Because town council seems to be a bit confusing to me.
I think, I think if the board wants guidance from the Attorney General's, I think that's a, like, 100% valid thing to, to ask of, of town council. I think that's what their job is. You know, whether or not, whether or not, you know, we get it from the Attorney General. But I think, I wouldn't, I wouldn't go and make that call myself unless I was, I was asked by either you or the select board. I think in this case, you know, the planning board is driving the bus on, on new language that would, you know, be kind of subject to that question, is this substantially different enough? So if that's something that the board's interested in, we would make that, you know, we would make that work with town council.
Hey, for everybody, I, I feel awful tonight. I just feel sick. And with three, almost three and a half hours into this meeting, I'd like to make a motion to bring this meeting to an end.
Second.
Sorry, Meredith, you're muted, so we can't hear you.
Thank you. And we can have that discussion next week regarding how we would pose that question to town council. So we have a motion. There's a second roll call. Maggie?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Sean?
Yes.
Cheryl?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Good evening, all. Thanks so much.
Thank you. Well, great. Good night. Bye-bye.
Good night.